Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October 26th, regular school board meeting. Before we begin tonight, I would just like to make a statement. Before we begin our meeting, I would like to remind everyone in the board chambers tonight about the requirements for attendance and participation in our school board meeting. When you entered, you saw signs posted indicating that a mask is required to be worn while inside this building. Also, there are signs posted indicating that we may ask you to leave the building for loud or disruptive behavior or for failure to comply with the requirement to wear a mask. Finally, please do not sit in places where you see a taped red X. Your presence, of course, at this meeting is welcome and much appreciated, and we thank you for your compliance and cooperation. So, I would like to, all members are here, so we do not need a motion to participate electronically. Ms. Hall, can you take the role, please?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Hollerback?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Dr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. Youngs?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
At this time, I'd like everyone to rise as we have our Color Guard presentation by Brookpoint High School's Navy ROTC.
Forward, arms. Ready, go. Right, face. Forward, arms. Forward, march.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry, go. Ready, go. Ready and go. Forward, carry, go. Ready, go. Forward, go. Ready, go. Right, face. Forward, arms. Forward, march.
Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like to thank our members of tonight's Color Guard, Hannah McGowan, Patricia Ting, Mathias McFadden, and Abigail Bullock, and our instructor this evening of this JROTC program is Mr. Mike Darnell. Thank you to our students for coming and presenting this evening. Next, we'd like to move on to the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
With the one move, Madam Chair, can I move 11.04 to 11.01?
We would just like to ask, since the high school program of studies involves potentially a number of staff, that we could move that to the beginning of our information items to accommodate staff. Is that okay? Second. It's been seconded. Any other additions or changes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. We will be starting first with our transportation appreciation video, Ms. Osborne, I believe.
My apologies. I thought someone else was introducing the video tonight. So, I'm gonna wing it. The transportation department, you'll see in this video, is much more than the drivers. It is attendants, it is route coordinators, it is all kinds of administrative folks who work together to bring our kids to and from school every day. We wanted to put together a video that would kind of show you what this is all about and just say thank you for all of the hard work and effort they put in every year. I thought somebody else was gonna play the video. So, does this work?
Works.
Well, I'm getting the...
It is embedded, suppose, in our agenda, but I'm afraid to click on it because most people know what happens when I do that.
There's a link to the video. There it is. Hold on.
Oh, you found it?
Nope. I need this. Perfect. Thanks.
Stafford County Public Schools has an amazing transportation department that is truly a team approach. From routing, dispatch, hiring, training, and driving, our staff of over 300 work together to get your children to school safety. Our drivers and attendants are usually the first and last interaction each day, and we strive to make that a positive experience for our students. The day begins with our routing coordinators, who are responsible for creating routes and assigning students to bus stops. We transport over 16,000 students to and from school. So far, our coordinators have created over 1,200 routes with anticipation of even more due to our growth. Once our coordinators have created all of the routes, it's up to our dispatch operators. Dispatch utilizes information between the drivers and coordinators in real time to maintain the integrity of the routes. And this brings us to our drivers. Let me start with our lead drivers. Each lead driver works with a team of drivers and attendants to make sure we R-U-L-E. This is an acronym to our core beliefs. Our bus drivers are our base support with the primary responsibility of safe transportation. Bus drivers are able to manage students while facing the opposite direction, while operating the bus, and keeping aware of road surroundings. Another important component is our administrative assistance team, who facilitates the communication between parents and students. We have a fantastic support team consisting of human resources, payroll and benefits, and informational technology that ensure policy and procedures are met and staff are up-to-date with viable information. So, as you can see, transportation operations is complex, and safety is our number-one priority. If you want to make a difference in the lives of children, you want to join Stafford County Public Schools Transportation Department.
All right. Thank you to any of our drivers and all of our transportation.
I see several stars from the video here in the room this evening. Thank you all for all that you do and all of your colleagues. All right, we're moving on to our special presentations. We'll be starting with Ms. Neely coming forth, our Chief Academic Officer for elementary schools regarding Falmouth Elementary School.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. Dr. Jones, I almost said Dr. Kizer, if you're out there. It's my pleasure to introduce Sally Johnakin Putnam tonight to share with you some exciting news about some work going on at Falmouth Elementary and throughout the division. I know you all are very aware that we are making every effort to address learning loss, and this is just one of the ways we're doing that. So, thank you, Dr. JP.
Thank you. All right, I watch the school board meetings often, so I know I need to be close to this mic so everyone can hear me. First of all, thank you, everyone, for allowing me to share tonight. One of the things that we're doing to try to help with our learning loss of students. So, we recently had one of our family events, and I'm gonna share a little bit about that with you. Here we go. And we did an event titled "One School, One Book," and we've done this several years in a row, but we were so excited to be able to bring that back this year. And as part of "One School, One Book," we end up purchasing a book for every family, and it's the same title book that we read as an entire building. And we invite the family to come and pick up that book. We do hand it out in both English and Spanish for our families that speak primarily Spanish. And we use this to promote reading as a family and as a building and be good models. Everything that we do surrounding that book is research-based. We work on expanding vocabulary, increasing comprehension, developing reading and listening stamina as students read with their family, and just promoting reading across the board. We partner with families to build capacity, and that is something we have found that we need to do more and more, is to build that capacity of families, because families are our children's first teachers. And so, we had an event this past week to kind of help promote that. So, here's a little bit about the timeline we use. First, we have to have the hype, because we always know we need to hook everyone in. So, a week leading up to our book reveal, we shared different clues. We did not tell students what the book would be. We shared different clues so that students could enter a drawing to be the top banana for this story. So, we had the reveal on morning announcements, and I got to reveal the title of the book, and we awarded one student from the drawing the Top Banana Award. And then, we had our literacy night last Wednesday evening, and that's where we distributed the books to the families, and we shared activities across all grade levels to reinforce reading. And these were activities that can not only be used for this text, but for any text that's being read, and phonemic awareness across all of literacy, even writing. And we are continuing to unite in reading with that text. We have activities that will be ongoing through the remainder of this month and into November, and reigniting that love for reading. So, we had 240 in-person attendees. What was exciting about this was it was an all-outdoor activity. So, the book we're reading is The One and Only Ivan, and so it takes place partially as a circus, so circus was our theme, and so we had multiple tents outside. We had 18 students participate virtually, because we never want to leave families or students out because of lack of transportation or families working, et cetera. So, we always offer a virtual component to our family evenings. One of the things that we loved about this text when choosing the text was that it is about perseverance, and that's truly what we feel like we have done as educators and students and families over this past year, is to persevere. It also has a theme of captivity and freedom, and so we felt that that was an important theme to carry on as we move into this year as well. Even though it's fiction, it is based on a true story. And again, we are partnering with families for an entire month to do activities. So, here are some photos from our literacy night. You'll see that first, we had one of our reading pairs, Monica Neville, had to get all the books together and get them all prepared for families, stuff them with activities, and get them ready to roll. And then, you see two of our grade levels being featured there underneath their tents with their activities. And then, here's some more fun, even Robin Hunter sitting out here. She's one of our fourth-grade teachers. There she is, under one of our tents, and you can see our families and students enjoying this. But I really felt listening to the families and the parents would be probably the best bet for you. Hopefully, we have no technical difficulties, but if we do, I can roll with it. We'll give it another second. If it doesn't come up, then we will punt, and you all have access to this.
It's buffering.
So...
Wait a minute.
Yeah, it is buffering. So, I'll continue to tell you about the event just a little bit for the essence of time. One of the things that we did in first grade is we did CVC drive-through words, so every family got to take a mat and a car home, so they learned the strategy and skill and then was able to take the resources, were able to take the resources home to reinforce that. We had at the kindergarten level, boggle. We did more different, you know, different types of boggle games. We did story twist, which was a lot of fun for our second graders. We did Bananagrams, and so I think you saw the table with bananas, and each banana had a joke written on it. So, I do encourage you to watch that video. There's one of the students reading the joke. And then, some comprehension cubes. So, I do encourage you to go back and watch, if you don't mind, because I do have two parents sharing there how beneficial the evening was to them, to be able to come and learn some new strategies and skills, to work with their students, to move forward, to help with that learning loss. And then, we did have virtual participation again, and there is a video clip there of one of our amazing teachers. We wanted to make sure the students were part of the activity, so kudos to the technology department from Stafford County Public Schools, because they came out and made sure we had the routers available outside to be able to have students right there in the mix, participating virtually and being part of the fun. So, again, we had take-home activities, and the fun will continue to address unfinished learning in the area of literacy throughout the remainder of the month, and we have activities that we will be sharing with families, not only in English, but other languages as well. All right. Any questions from any of our board members?
Thank you.
You're so welcome.
Yeah, just to say thank you so much for, you know, making sure. I know how much you care about the kids at Falmouth, so thank you so much.
Definitely, definitely. How could you not love them, you know? So, I will share. Our fun continues. I'll invite all of you to come to some of our other activities or participate. In the month of December, we're doing "Dustember," where we're going to be doing science fair projects and sending kits home for our families to do those together. Because, again, a lot of times, families can't come to events, but if we show them how to do it on video and give them the opportunity to do it, they can do it whenever their schedule suits. So, don't be surprised if you end up with some science kits coming your way. We also are going to do a Take-Aim workshop in February, an academic improvement workshop for families. We're looking at doing this on a Saturday, hopefully having transportation help us out, have an activity for the kids, and then parents can choose sessions to attend that will help them gain in their capacity to help their own student. And then, we'll have a STEM night in March. So, again, thank you very much for your time. We certainly appreciate it, and I feel like Oprah. Each of you receive a copy of her book. And you...
Thank you.
So, enjoy.
Thank you so much. I appreciate...
Is Ms. Youngs in Spanish?
I do have a quick question. Have you shared this program with any of the other elementary school principals, and are they doing anything similar to what you're doing? Absolutely. "One School, One Book," many schools within Stafford have done, and I think Dr. Jones and Carrie Neely will share with you that I share everything that we do at Falmouth with everyone, because we're all in it together. So, definitely.
Yes. Thank you.
So, again, I know my counterparts are doing amazing things. I appreciate the benefit of being able to come up and share tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and it'll be fun to look at the video and stuff. And what I think is so amazing about it is we are always focused on our kids, but during the pandemic, we need to be reaching out to our families and making it a part, and continuing to solidify that partnership and reestablish it in some ways.
Absolutely.
So, I really love the family involvement, and maybe you'll see us at some of theirs again.
Yes, absolutely, and our parents do want to be a part. Yes, thank you so much.
All right. Well, thank you. Moving on to our next item is our school nutrition update. I'm gonna invite Mr. Fulmer and, I believe, Mr. Williams to come forward, or...
Yes, it will be Mr. Williams. I just wanted to get up and introduce him. You guys already know him, but I just wanted to take a moment to show some appreciation to Mr. Williams, which you won't see when he's going through his presentation, is all the hard work he's done behind the scenes, not for this presentation, but to make nutrition continue over the last two years. He's only, you know, he started the year that we had COVID, so he's only here about a half a year, three-quarters of a year, and then COVID hit, and his team has not stopped and has not missed a beat. And so, what you won't see in some of the pictures and stuff that he'll share is Mr. Williams and Mr. Freeman, our new supervisor, out in our cafeterias, working on a daily basis, because we're short-staffed there, too. And so, Mr. Williams and his staff do not hesitate to get out in that kitchen and help serve food. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Williams, but thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, school board members, and Dr. Jones. Thank you for the opportunity to share some school nutrition updates. Before I get started, I would like to just quickly recognize some of the nutrition team members that are here tonight, representing our elementary level. We have Ms. Lisa Chambers, the Nutrition Manager at Wide Water. She has 26 years working in the district, and she is the proud mother of four who all graduated from Stafford County Public Schools. Next, representing our middle school level is Ms. Savvy Stanford. She's the Nutrition Manager at Gale Middle School. Ms. Stanford has 18 years working in the district and has seen both of her children graduate from Stafford County Public Schools. Representing our high school level is Ms. Martha Tolson, the Nutrition Manager at Brookpoint High School. Ms. Tolson has 21 years of service in the district, and her four children also graduated from Stafford County Public Schools. And lastly, Chris already mentioned, but we have a new team member, Mr. Justin Freeman. He serves as the Nutrition Supervisor, and he's been with us just a little over a month, and he's, brings great experience as a general manager in the restaurants in the county. So, we're excited to have them on board. And this is just a small representation of the fine staff that work tirelessly to serve our students and faculty. I think I'll go ahead and get this open. Okay, this evening, I will provide an update and focus on the free meal mandate, customer satisfaction initiatives, student meal participation trends, program challenges, and future program enhancements. As most of you already know, the USDA waiver allows students to receive meals free of charge through June 2022. In addition, we're continuing to provide meals for any students attending virtually. We offer curbside meal pickup at two of our high schools on Wednesday evenings from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. And also, I think it's important to note that student meals are at no expense to the district's operating budget. Next, I will focus on our customer satisfaction initiatives. This year, school nutrition had to make several significant programmatic changes in response to the COVID pandemic. We had to transition to classroom dining in addition to serving students in the cafeteria. As a result, the school nutrition department implemented a simplified menu for efficiency. The simplified menu consisted of items that could easily be prepackaged and transported. Consequently, this menu reduced student options, which ultimately impacts customer satisfaction. Therefore, we recently made an adjustment to take into consideration our student and parent expectations. We increased student entree choices, and we've continued to witness positive student participation and customer satisfaction. Nutrition is also emphasizing fresh fruits and vegetables as part of our customer satisfaction initiative. We have also added additional signage and pictures on our serving lines, because we want to encourage and remind our students to take a complete meal consisting of fruits and veggies. A complete meal, obviously, there's our five food groups, our meat alternative, grains, vegetable, fruit, and milk. But as part of the National School Lunch Program, students have the option. They do not have to take all of the five components. So, that's definitely, we want to continue to encourage and remind them of the importance of taking a complete meal. Next, just a few pictures of what we do to encourage our students to take, you know, these fruits and vegetables and take a complete meal. Several high schools, we have North Stafford High School and Brookpoint High School. We want our serving lines to be attractive and inviting for our students when they come through and to make, help them make good, healthy choices. This is some of our sample meal service. We have our manager from HH Pool, and she's, they actually serve, their students come through the line, but they actually, I think, a lot of them take their meals back to the classroom. So, we've had to really be creative in how we're serving our students and meeting their needs, as well as working around COVID mitigation strategies. Here's some examples of some actual student meals. Again, you know, we definitely want to encourage, and we're looking at, and we've made enhancements to our menu, and we're going to continue to do that, because our students are our priority. This is another very, one of our popular, one of our most popular meals. It's the chicken and waffles, so the students love that meal, and these are just, again, a complete meal with all of the fresh vegetables and fruits. They're offered daily. Another popular one is our chef salad with the crispy chicken on it. Next, I would like to give you an update on student meal participation trends. I must add that school nutrition, again, is a self-supporting, so we depend solely upon our students choosing to dine with us. Therefore, we are highly motivated to offer our students nutritious and appealing meals. One of the most significant participation trends is the unanticipated increase in high school student meal participation. Middle and high schools have witnessed, middle and elementary schools have witnessed significant increases as well in lunch, but more so in breakfast. In the next slide, you'll see the table, which outlines our average high school breakfast meals daily, pre-pandemic, which was 260 daily, to jumping currently to 490, which is an 89% increase, which is phenomenal. Our lunch, this is, this basically blows my mind. Lunch in the high schools pre-pandemic, on average, was around 790 lunches, student lunches daily, and that's up to 1,500, which is a 90% increase. So, we're very, very excited about that. Our middle schools, we're seeing a significant increase in our breakfast participation from 200 pre-pandemic to 285 currently, and from our lunch from 500... Next, just a few pictures of what we do to encourage our students to take, you know, these fruits and vegetables and take a complete meal. Several high schools, we have North Stafford High School and Brookpoint High School. We want our serving lines to be attractive and inviting for our students when they come through and to make, help them make good, healthy choices. This is some of our sample meal service. We have our manager from HH Pool, and she's, they actually serve, their students come through the line, but they actually, I think, a lot of them take their meals back to the classroom. So we've had to really be creative in how we're serving our students and meeting their needs as well as working around COVID mitigation strategies. Here's some examples of some actual student meals. Again, you know, we definitely want to encourage, and we're looking at, and we've made enhancements to our menu. And we're going to continue to do that because our students are our priority. This is another very, one of our popular, one of our most popular meals. It's the chicken and waffles. So the students love that meal. And these are just, again, a complete meal with all of the fresh vegetables and fruits. They're offered daily. Another popular one is our chef salad with the crispy chicken on it. Next, I would like to give you an update on student meal participation trends. I must add that school nutrition, again, is a self-supporting. So we depend solely upon our students choosing to dine with us. Therefore, we are highly motivated to offer our students nutritious and appealing meals. One of the most significant participation trends is the unanticipated increase in high school student meal participation. Middle and high schools have witnessed, middle and elementary schools have witnessed significant increases as well in lunch, but more so in breakfast. In the next slide, you'll see the table which outlines our average high school breakfast meals daily, pre-pandemic, which was 260 daily, to jumping currently to 490, which is an 89% increase, which is phenomenal. Our lunch, this is, this basically blows my mind. Lunch in the high schools pre-pandemic on average was around 790 lunches, student lunches daily, and that's up to 1,500, which is a 90% increase. So we're very, very excited about that. Our middle schools, we're seeing a significant increase in our breakfast participation from 200 pre-pandemic to 285 currently. And from our lunch from 500 pre-pandemic to 604, which is a 21% increase. And I can say these percent increases, especially at our high school, is probably, you know, some of the, you know, highest that we've ever witnessed, ever, in, in, in school nutrition. Our elementary, we have, definitely see strong increases in our breakfast participation from 240 pre-pandemic to 370 currently, which is a 54% increase. Lunch from 380 daily, pre-pandemic, to 440, which is a 16% increase. So we're very pleased overall. Next, I will share some of the challenges confronting the nutrition program. We tend to work quietly behind the scenes and try not to make a lot of noise. But we're definitely experiencing these challenges that are not only affecting our program, but also nationally. While we're excited by the increase in meal participation, school nutrition continues to experience declines in the availability of food and related supplies. This disruption in the food supply chain is negatively impacting school nutrition programs across our nation. In addition to a lack of product availability, we're also experiencing delivery delays and significant labor shortages. Our nutrition program is working diligently with our vendors to secure adequate food and related supplies. However, as circumstances dictate, school menus may be subject to change on short notice. So please know that we will make every effort to maintain quality and provide outstanding customer service in light of these existing challenges. Another significant challenge that was mentioned earlier by Chris is our staff shortages. Consequently, many of our nutrition staff has had to do more with less. But we are yet, however, optimistic, you know, as we're working with our human resources department to help coordinate recruitment affairs, and also they're considering other recruitment initiatives. So there is hope and light at the end of the tunnel. This is some of our dedicated staff working in our kitchens. You would be amazed at the productivity and the amount of work that it takes to prepare and plan and serve our students. Because regardless if half of them show up or all of them show up, all the students still have to be fed. And regardless, they do this, and they don't complain because they do it because of their passion for our students. So I'm certainly in awe of them and commend them for their efforts. This is some additional photos. I think this is one from Mountain View and Brookpoint. So these are the actual photos of our folks working behind the scenes to get the job done. Some future program enhancements. So some of the things that we're, that I'm excited about offering because based upon my prior experience, these concepts enhancements were student favorites, and I'm confident they'll be well-received here as well as we get out of COVID and into a more, and once we, these supply chains disruption tend to decrease, we'll be able to order equipment, which now it takes forever to get any type of new equipment. So, but we're excited that we're going to be able to implement some of these concepts in the very near future. So our made-to-order deli sandwich stations, self-serve salad bars, theme meal concepts, and our emphasis on more-from-scratch cooking. So I'm excited. I'm grateful for this opportunity to share some updates and some highlights of the nutrition program. And I'll open up now if you all have any questions.
So I just had a question about, I wasn't sure I understood the charts that showed the meal service trends. Is this per school or is this across the whole division? So, for example, for high school meal service, you have that the mean daily lunches are 1,500.
Yes.
Out of 10,000 high school students?
That's per school.
Per school. Then that makes much more sense to me. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Ms. Hollerback.
Well, first off, future programs, I'm stoked about that. And I don't have kids in the school division anymore. My last one just graduated this past June. A question on how we're being funded by the federal government with regard to this program of free lunches. How is it that we are receiving the money? Are we submitting an expense report saying this is how much money we've spent? Or do they just give us a lump sum and that's how we're purchasing the meals with the upfront money that they've given us?
Sure. Great question. Thank you. So again, we are only refunded or reimbursed based upon the meals that we serve. That's why we're highly motivated to provide meals that our students are going to like and accept. Because if they don't accept, if they don't eat the meals, then we don't get funding for, we don't get reimbursed. So we submit monthly reimbursement claims.
Gotcha. So thank you very much for being here. I had asked Dr. Jones to, a couple of weeks ago, to have you guys come in and kind of give us this presentation based on some fodder that was going on online on social media about what we were serving in our schools. And, you know, these, some of these pictures that were posted online just didn't seem like it was what we were serving our children. So I'm glad to see the pictures that you showed, that what we're offering the kids. My question is, is when they go up with their tray, they get to choose what goes on their plate, correct?
Correct.
So they can choose a full salad, they can choose a piece of fruit, they can choose the chicken and the waffles. Some of the pictures that were showing up online, and I want this to be discussed tonight because I want our parents to know that this is not happening, what they're seeing on social media, and that indeed their kids do have choices. I will hand it to you at the end of the meeting, but I took a sample of one of the pictures. The other question I had is what are we serving on? Because one of the pictures that I saw was being, the food was being served in Styrofoam. I don't believe we are using Styrofoam. Is that correct?
Well, based upon our vendor shortages and the nationwide shortage, we've had to use some Styrofoam, but that's not the item that we have specked on our bid. We have a postable tray that's specked for the bid. But it's either, when we have no other options, that is what we have to use.
So that's what we're using in a pinch?
Yeah. And you can't even find hardly, we haven't, we've had difficulty just finding forks and spoons. So it's really been significant, this disruption in the supply chain. The state has, the federal government has, they're trying to put in more mandates and funding, additional funding to assist. They're trying to relax rules in order to help school systems. And they believe that it's only going to get worse before it gets better.
Right.
Yes. So with regards to, certainly, we understand, and we had a streamlined menu in order to accommodate students that are eating all over the building, in the school classrooms. And one thing that, like I was sharing, it's important, our students, we want to make sure that they have the options. And that was one of the things that we did, brought back in more, more menu choices and options. So yeah, it's, we anticipated, and working with the building administrators and had their support, we anticipated that it would slow down the lines some because right now they were prepackaged and they were grabbing them and going. But when we limit the menu and simplify the menu, obviously, then if barbecue, pork barbecue is on the menu, and that's the main item, if that's the primary item, and they're used to having an option of getting a chicken sandwich or some other item, and that's not, and that's the only option, then it impacts customer satisfaction. So we certainly hear and listen to our students and our families. Again, because we are committed to providing our families, our students with great meals because we don't, we don't exist if they don't participate.
Right, right. Well, and again, I thank you for coming up here. I think, I thought it needed to be said. I thought our parents needed to hear, you know, something contrary to what their kids were going home and telling them. And especially to clear up the whole, a year or two ago, we instituted this using cardboard straws, but yet we're serving in Styrofoam. So I wanted to put that on the table too. So thank you very much for being here. I appreciate that.
Sure. You're quite welcome.
Ms. Yann? Yes, thank you for being here. I did receive the text, and I automatically sent it to Dr. Jones. And I was happy that you investigated it and sent the information directly back to me to let me know that that was not the case because I did receive it from our parents. Lately, we are receiving a lot of trash texts in our mailbox. So hopefully, parents and constituents could figure out what's real and what's not real. The question that I have is a comment that you made. And if you don't have the answer, it's okay. You could just email it to Dr. Jones, and he could send it to us.
Sure.
The increase, you mentioned 1,500, and that it was an increase in the number of meals distributed? Is this because it's free? Or is it because that we have increased number of students that were added?
So that's a great question. So in my opinion, meals are free. So obviously, it removes the barrier for some students to choose a meal. But I think more importantly, as you saw, that the increase, you saw more significant increases at the high school level, where high school students, teenagers, make their own choice. Regardless of whether it's free or not, you know, a high school student, you can't make a high school student take lunch if they don't want it. And so that was quite significant because, you know, given the choice, we saw, we're seeing significant increases in our high school student participating. So that's motivation for us to continue to bring in new enhancements, motivation for us to continue to make changes and continue to, continue to change the image. And I think school lunch overall, you know, and I'll say that school nutrition in general needs to do a better job at telling our own story, right, and getting the information out. So that's one thing that we're committed to doing.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Ms. Randall?
Thank you very much for your presentation. I really appreciate that when concerns from parents and students came forward, that you were able to pivot and try to help change the menu options and also making sure everything isn't beige, that there is options of colors, whether students choose to take them as, like you said, their choice. But I would like to know, you mentioned about your staff shortage. How much of a staff shortage do you have right now?
Sure.
And is that more the elementary middle or higher, or is it all the way even across?
It's across the board. We were, I think, a couple of weeks ago, we were around 50-plus members, staff members short. However, in the last couple of weeks, we've, our communications department has done a great job helping us get flyers out and information out to our parents. Because we're unique in that we tend to attract employees who have children in the school system. So again, they're committed to doing a great job. And they want to work certain hours because our hours are unique. We typically need people, you know, three, four, five hours during the middle of the day. And so we've been, with the help of communications and getting the word out, and, you know, sometimes bad publicity is good publicity. It helps because more people were coming forward and applying. So we're grateful. It's, I think, somewhere down to maybe in half now, maybe around 25, 30.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you for coming this evening, Mr. Williams. And thank you for our leads at each of our schools and for coming out this evening. We appreciate all that you do. It's such an important part of our school day. And again, Mr. Williams, I don't know if Mr. Fulmer and Dr. Jones are going to duck. Make sure if you have the needs, we are in the middle of beginning to start the budget process. If you see, based on sort of coming out of the pandemic and how things continue, if you see some of the unique needs coming down, just make sure that you bring those forward because the meal service is so important to our students.
Certainly. Thank you. And we have great support from Dr. Jones and Mr. Fulmer.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Let's see. We know what's next. So Mr. Fulmer, and I know Mr. White will be coming forward with our report on student enrollment projections. For those who have not gone through this, years after years, at the beginning of the year, based on a September 30 number is what is used by the state. So we usually wait until that time, that particular cutoff that is used across the state, until we have those numbers. And then Mr. White, Mr. Anna, they do their magic with those numbers. But there is a date that is used by the state. There is also, I believe, a second number in March, I believe, that will also come to the board, which will also help also show how trending will be working throughout the school year. So.
So I don't need to introduce Mr. White because you guys have met him several times, and he's presented to you several times. I do just want to kind of introduce the topic, which Ms. Hazard has done well at as well. But specifically, Mr. White's going to talk about the September 30 snapshot in time of our fall enrollment number for all levels. And then he took that data, several data sets that went into building our 10-year projections. I do want to clarify, tonight is really to talk about that September 30 number and our 10-year projection. We know the next step is now evaluating that and saying, all right, these are the trouble areas, which you'll see on here. But we're not prepared to speak tonight about, this is the solution. And one of his last slides actually states that in the next couple of months, we're going to be coming forward with that. And we've talked about this, maybe even four or six weeks ago, that we said that would be coming later this year, early next calendar year. And that could be relocatables, it could be redistricting. And obviously, we have new schools coming on board, but that's in a few years. So what are our short-term fixes? So that's not really the topic tonight. The topic is to talk, to give you that overview of the 10-year projection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fulmer, for that intro. Good evening, Chairperson Hazard, members of the School Board, Dr. Jones. As Chris mentioned, I'm going to talk to you this evening about our enrollment projections.
White, can you move that a little closer to you? I appreciate it.
No problem. Okay. All right. All right. All right. So our official enrollment count as of September 30, 2021. In terms of K-12 enrollment, it was 30,004 students this year, which is an increase of over 1,000 students since last year. And that represents 3.5% growth. Just to give you a frame of reference, when I talk growth at school levels, 2% or more is considered high growth. And anything between 0 and 1 is sort of moderate growth. And of course, less than 0, you're losing kids. Okay. Pre-K 12 enrollment was 30,564 students. Of course, we wanted to bring that number to you this year because in the past, maybe we didn't share that pre-K number, and we wanted you to have that information. That was an increase of, that represents an increase of 1,081 students since last year, 3.6% growth. This spring, we did an updated enrollment projection. Some counties chose not to do that. They chose to stick with what they did, what they projected in the fall. And some of them are really regretting that now as their enrollment numbers are way off. Fortunately, we did the spring update, and our projection was fairly close. It came in at 29,745 students. which was ninety-nine point one percent accurate district-wide. So that was pretty good. All right. So now I want to share with you a nice chart that shows our historical K-12 enrollment. And this is over the past decade. And looking at this chart, you know, we have, we can see that growth ramping up as we go from 2013 through 2019. And then all of a sudden, COVID happened. And it's still here. But we saw a significant drop in enrollment last year. And fortunately for us, we can see that enrollment recovered pretty quickly. We had a 3% gain. Now I'm going to show you the same information, a little more detail, broken out in a chart. And what we have here is enrollment change. And this shows you over the past three years. What I have highlighted in the black box is to show you division-wise, for example. In 2020, we had the twenty-nine thousand students. This year, we had thirty thousand. I already told you, we grew a thousand kids. But if you look to the 2019 enrollment, just sort of look at the elementary enrollment. Compare elementary in nineteen to elementary in 2021. You know, it's eerily close. It's like, when we say, "They came back," they came back. You know, that's your proof. Middle, you know, was relatively flat, you know, all three years. And high school, you can see over the past three years, it's steadily risen. And so that's sort of consistent with what we've been talking about in our capital planning. We've been saying, hey, high school's growing fast. We need to get that high school number six. This data sort of backs that up as well. Okay, so, let's talk about our ten-year enrollment projections. And here in Stafford, some of us call it the Chicklets chart. You know, it's got that, all those funny colors on it. But we're not going to get to that chart yet. We're just going to start first talking about our enrollment projections. So the purpose of the projections are to predict K-12 enrollment by school over a ten-year period. And projections for staff and the school board and other officials are used for, to inform budgeting and facilities planning decisions, such as deployment of relocatable classrooms, boundary changes, additions to new schools, or, I'm sorry, additions to existing schools, or whether or not we need new schools. And if we do, what the opening date should be. The key thing with projections, it's not just, you know, done by demographic planning. It's not just our office. We have a lot of contributors where we get data. And so I want to just make sure that I say thanks to Jay and his team in IT. They did a great job getting me the data I need to get this process going each year. Also, I want to say thanks to Stafford County Planning and Zoning. They provide us with valuable housing data that we use in our model for future student yields. Also, I want to thank the Stafford County Office of GIS. We get a lot of data from them. Also, Virginia State Department of Health Statistics for the birth data. Of course, without birth data, we can't do projections. So that's a very important piece of information. And lastly, Walden Cooper Center, their population data. All right. All right. So before I get and show you the projections, I want to give you the disclaimer. I got to give, you know, we got to read the fine print, so everybody's on the same page. So, we use a modified cohort progression methodology, which in turn uses birth, anticipated student yields from future housing, and historic trends of students progressing from one grade to the next in order to project future enrollment. So here's the disclaimer. I don't have a crystal ball, first thing. I didn't put that on here. But I do have a lot of great mathematical formulas, and I'm really good at looking at trends and data. And projections, they're based on the best information we have available. So if next week, someone puts in a permit at the planning office for a 2,000-unit subdivision somewhere, it's not there right now. If it wasn't at that snapshot when we prepared this information, we're not going to have it. That's not to say we can't put it in, but it's not there now. So I just want you to be clear about that, because, believe it or not, I get that occasionally. And also, in terms of disclaimers, I want to point out that all projections have various degrees of uncertainty. One uncertain, uncertainty we experienced last year was COVID. Nobody saw that coming. Nobody's model went down last, you know, last year, the year prior. Didn't happen. So there's certain things we just don't know and will never know. And that's why they call this projections and not actuals, right? So I always make that distinction. And there's so many other factors, such as economic changes, you know, the size of the population that we're projecting. Typically, the larger the population, the more accurate the projection. And lastly, the year span of the projection. Some school systems do five years, some do ten. Obviously, the longer the projection, the more error and the more risk. All right. So now that I got those disclaimers out the way, let's get to the data. Okay, so I need to say first, this is our elementary forecast for the next ten years. And so that first bar, 2021, is actual. So there was twelve thousand six hundred sixty-seven students. Over the next five years, which is 2026 on this chart, we see that we grow a thousand students. And then ten years from now, way out in 2031, we're growing twenty-nine hundred-plus students. And so, you know, that's, that's pretty good growth at our elementary level. Now let's take a look at middle school. And I want to say that the document that you have, I made an edit, because I had a copy-paste error with high school. And I caught that and I just made that correction. So this information will be updated on the website for that slide. I just want to make that, so you're not going crazy. I made the adjustment. Okay. So at the middle school level, middle school's projected to add four hundred students over the next five years and a thousand students over the next ten years. And we know that a thousand students at the middle school level, essentially, we're saying, that's another middle school, right? And, you know, thinking to our CIP, because my brain has so much in it, I always sort of link our numbers with what we're saying in our capital improvement planning, because, you know, projections and CIP planning are sort of tied. And sort of, if you think about that planning, we're saying in the out years, we're going to need a middle school. It's not the most urgent need. That's high school. Okay. And lastly, high school, they're slated to grow seven hundred fifty students in the next five years and eighteen hundred-plus students over the next decade. So again, we're growing at all three levels. And this sort of, this is sort of a summary slide. Just K through twelve, we're growing twenty-two hundred-plus students in five years and fifty-eight hundred-plus students over the next decade. All right. So our next steps, November fifth, the enrollment projections will be submitted to the county's technical review committee for consideration in the county CIP process. In mid-December, the annual accommodation plan report will be released. And it'll be on our website and available to the public, where there'll be a very thorough analysis of all this projection information that you have in the Chicklets chart. And we'll do our best to develop some options to begin alleviating some of the crowding that you see in your Chicklets chart. And in winter, our goal is to provide you with those options and begin the process of community engagement, if needed, to alleviate crowding. That's all I have for you. Do you have any questions for me?
I'll let others start. I'll be good tonight. Dr. Chase, you want to start us?
Sure. So, you know, last year, we had, last spring, we had a discussion about where to put portables. And in that chart, I know you have no crystal ball, but Rocky Run was supposed to be the fullest. And it looks like Conway is actually the fullest. It's at 1.11% over, whereas Rocky Run's at 1.07. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Park Ridge is the highest at 1.16. But my question is, on this chart for Rocky Run, the program capacity is eight twenty-five. Is that capacity including the portables, or is that prior to the portables?
Right. So we, it does not include portables. We don't include that in any program capacity or design capacity for middle and high school levels.
Okay. So in terms of, because those portables are there, it's not quite as crowded at Rocky Run as it is at some of these other schools?
Yes, that's correct. I mean, the portables, depending on what grades are in there, they typically add, you know, maybe twenty-four, just as an average student. So if you have four, you've got another hundred seats.
Right. Okay. Just wanting to clarify that. Okay. And then, so if we're talking about adding five thousand students in ten years, how many schools does that, how many schools do we need relative to what we currently have?
Three.
Yeah. Yeah.
One middle school and two high schools.
So, let's see here. And actually, so I think you may be looking at the slide that I did the copy paste. So let me go back, if I can, here. Let's see here. Okay, so twenty-nine hundred-plus students at the elementary level by fall 2031. And so, one way to look at that, our typical, well, our new bills for elementary schools are about nine hundred-plus.
Right.
You know, so three elementary schools, long-term.
Okay. And then how many middle schools?
So middle schools, you know, and again, we have to look at where we are. But just only looking at the growth, not considering where we are now. Middle schools are growing seven, let's see, over ten years, a thousand students. That's another middle school.
Okay. And then for high school?
Well, we know that high school six is planned, so that's going to knock this number down. So I did not include any of the CIP projects that weren't built yet in this, in this projection. But, you know, conceivably, when those twenty-one hundred seats come online, high school will have roughly three hundred seats available, which means it's time to build another high school. Because they'll be above that ninety percent, they'll be, you know, there'll be time to build again.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we going down this way?
Hey there. So, I assume, and you know what they say about assumptions.
Yeah. Well, that's what this model, the projections, it's about the assumptions.
It's my assumptions that are questionable.
Okay.
I assume that downtown Stafford is accounted for in these projections.
Yes. If, if, now there were eighty-five projects, now I don't remember them all, but if, if it's in the county's map of development that are active, it's in here. But...
Can you confirm that for me?
I can.
You don't have to do it right this minute.
Okay.
I'm just curious, because I'm guessing that the projections are based on what the development is seen to be doing, right? And it's not based on permits or people, developers putting in, you know, development site, site plans and things like that.
Right.
I'm not quite sure. It's been a while since I dabbled in any of this, so.
Okay.
I would just like to have that cleared up, because if it's not included in this, I mean, if we're looking at this Chicklet chart here, Brookpoint and Stafford Middle and Stafford L are hosed.
Okay. Okay.
Curiously hosed.
I'll get back to you really quickly on that.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, because I would like to pass this, you know, this red flag on to whoever fills this seat when I'm gone.
Okay.
To ask them to please make this a priority.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for the presentation again. And so for our constituents and the individuals that are listening to us, can you just explain if you still are comparing apples and oranges with the county in terms of program capacity and design capacity? Or is that straightened out yet?
I want to say that we're definitely moving in the right direction. In the county's comprehensive plan this year, that they just updated, they do acknowledge program capacity. And at a recent county board meeting, but if this was the planning commission.
Was it three on three, I think?
This was a planning commission meeting about a month ago. And they said that they're acknowledging program capacity for elementary schools. So it's starting to get there.
Okay. And then, while you're looking at downtown Stafford, can you check and see? Because I know that recently, there was some photo op on 610 that they were building apartments.
Okay.
And so I personally don't think that it's in this document right here. So if we are going to have apartments on 610, definitely, we need to include those numbers.
Okay.
And the closest school in that area will be Park Ridge. So we definitely need an elementary school in the north.
Okay.
So that's something that I need to pass on to the next one coming in the seat.
That would be the Garrison.
Garrisonville.
Garrisonville? Okay.
It's called the Garrison, that apartment, that complex, yeah.
So we know how many seats are, how many?
I don't know off the top of my head. I just know.
How did you know?
This has been planned for several years, so that's why I don't know if it's considered an active or an inactive. That's probably, that's where they, that's the hard part of the things that get approved and then they sit for a while. But then they somehow rise and all of a sudden, we have children.
Yeah, it was suddenly, it suddenly rose.
Okay.
And the location for development rose, but not that there were apartments and students coming out of there. So that needs to be known.
Okay.
And addressed.
Okay. Thank you. And I did want to mention that when the EAP comes out this year, one change that'll be different, we will show the developments.
Really?
Yes. So that's forthcoming, but I will get back to you with the answers very quickly, like tomorrow morning, on your two questions. Okay.
Thank you for the excellent information. I have a question about the elementary schools that have reduced class sizes. And they're, I don't, how many do we have? Five? Do you know how many we have?
There are about roughly almost half of our schools, or?
Because Hampton Oaks was, had a very high free and reduced percentage, which made it eligible for the lower class sizes. And then after the redistricting, that eligibility, but for the ability, the state says you can take an average for three years, would go away. It's my understanding that we should be very close to that eligibility going away. Is that factored into here?
Again, this is the snapshot in time. So if today, it's a CSR school, then it's going to show that in our projections. And I'll let Mr. Fulmer jump in.
Because I can answer that. It's going to be included. And as we get into this budget cycle, I anticipate it's still going to be a CSR school, because of the way that three-year average looks and the three years that they're looking at for the averages. It might be that one of those years has dropped off, but the average is still going to be high enough to trigger it as a CSR school. We'll know officially when the new state templates come out in December.
Okay. But that's, that's going to affect the future years. In terms of, if the program capacity goes up, then the percentage is going to change. Would it not?
So for the next two to three years, it'll still be the lower program capacity. And then in the out years, it could, if the free and reduced percentage stays as low as it, as low, lower, if it's not going to trigger into a CSR school.
It's not anywhere near. It was fifty, what was it, fifty-nine percent? It was very high before and now it's very low. And it seems like it's been a couple of years. The reason I'm asking this is that there's extra resources that go into that. The program capacity's lower. And the intent is that that be for the schools with the high free and reduced population, where we want to focus, you know, the additional help for the students. So I just want to make sure that we know where that is. And I would be interested in knowing when that extra eligibility is going to come to an end. Because I think that's going to affect, to a certain extent, it will affect this, these numbers. Because the program capacity will go up, which means there's, it's the same school, it's the same classrooms, but the program capacity will be higher. And that's going to mean that there's more room, you know, not to be in, you know, one of these colors that we don't like in the chart.
And Margaret Brer, Mr. Fulmer, in that regard, and then I will jump over. Because of how, after Mr. Williams' excellent presentation, how is free and reduced lunch being calculated this year? If all lunches are being offered to students. And I'm not trying to be flip, but I am actually curious.
They fill out forms, don't they?
Yeah. So last year, we did not do the forms. This year, we are doing the forms again. They can, are still submitting the forms.
It's, you know, a little bit tougher probably to get a adequate return rate when lunches are already free. I know the state, I don't know where they settle on this, but I know this has been a topic of discussion at the state level on how they're gonna use that data this year, um, when they're calculating the budget into this next biennial.
People may or may not have filled out forms, and we may or may not have particularly accurate data in that.
Madam Chairman, it may also affect how we identify our title schools as well.
Right.
Would it not, Mr. Fulmer?
It could, yes ma'am.
Good. That was sort of my thinking when I was hearing that conversation. Dr. Warner, I, I'm not picking on you, I just wondered if you had any questions.
First of all, thank you, Lionel, for all your work, Mr. White, you always do an excellent job. I think everybody's pretty much asked my questions, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Randall?
No, I'm good.
All right, I have a couple, um, really more the big picture. How did the census data play into this, if at all? And, and it may be more of a discussion, because many of us saw that, um, I think we were together when it was presented over the Board of Supervisors, um, that was a fascinating look at our community as well.
Right, so, uh, it just so happens, believe it or not, we have better data than the census. Because the census is sort of a survey where they send it out to people.
Mm-hmm.
Well, with schools, you gotta give us your data. There's no survey, oh, I don't know, I wanna fill it out or not, everybody's gotta fill it out. So, we have really good data.
Which I'm glad, I just, you know, it was just, it was just a, a comment point, which did give, I think, as I have said from here before, every person in Stafford County should look at that presentation, though, on the census, because it is the really big picture.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I talked about the free and reduced lunch, I think the main thing, I'm not gonna give my main gross speech, but I will say this. If there is any, um, feeling that we are not growing and that we do not need infrastructure, I would invite everybody to look at these numbers. We are talking, well, unfortunately, it's not getting, um, funded. And at some point, we are gonna be at a crisis point. We have three schools right now at over 105%. We have two between 100 and 105, we have 95, we have, uh, 95% at least. Six, and none of them are getting, going to get smaller. And even as we talk about relief on the horizon, we're still not talking four or five years. And then high, elementary, 10. Because when you look at, even if you take, and this is not the pure science, because I don't like to do aggregate, when, when we talk about looking at numbers and saying, oh, well, you subtract out the total, and you subtract out the number of students, oh, there's 900 students, just move them around. What I like to say to the community is just moving around students after a pandemic and everything else, where they are trying to create relationships with their students, it's not so easy to just move students around because you, you think we can do it. We need space, our class sizes are increasing, and we need more schools. Even if you take the elementary numbers of growing of 2,200 students in five years, let's say you could redistrict all the students that are on here, about 900 of the difference between our seats and our actual, you still need one entirely new school within five years for elementary. And I don't like that kind of math, but let's just do it aggregate. Am I correct if I, because there's about 900 and some students difference between program capacity and actuals. So, let's say we take those 900 students, and your student could be one of them, moved. But let's say we do that, there's still another 1,300 we have to find somewhere for. And I'm just saying, we are going to need that infrastructure, we're going to need it soon, and we're going to need the community, um, to want to have those, um, facilities for all our students. So, I think these, hopefully, we will be talking about these with our counterparts in December, and coming to the same conclusion, so.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Um, can you tell me what the, uh, I'm assuming you're using program capacity for, um, North Star and Rising Star, but do you know what their capacity, I see what you have as their count, but I'm just wondering, what is their capacities at both of those locations?
Um, that's information I can get to you, we do have the total number of rooms, so, we can use a multiplier to, you know, create an estimate.
Ms. Randall, um, on Head Start, um, there are different, the program capacity there is completely different. So, so that's gonna have to be reflected, it's not just the number of rooms, it says, if it's an ECSE, what type of classroom it is. So, um, I know that at one of them, there is currently three classrooms, but they are designated for ECSE.
So, it's a program capacity, yeah, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to mention that, um, I did ask, uh, Dr. Warner to put on the Fab Agenda, a look at Monture. Um, and not the new build, but the old build, um, to see if there's any opportunity there, if we, um, need space, if there's something that we could do with that location. Um, although it was, um, given back, uh, to the Board of Supervisors. I don't think there's anything done with it at this point yet, correct?
They're using it some.
I, I think they're using it, what, for like training?
I think the Sheriff's Department is using it for training.
Training, but, um, wanted to know if there's anything that we could, um, just to look at it and see if, you know, how much it's gonna cost with that mold and everything, just in case, um, we need to utilize that space at some point in time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, again, thank you for the great work and analysis that we can do now in-house. I really appreciate your work, and also your work going over with the Planning Commission and backing up some of the conversations we've had. I think we have gotten them to the program capacity for elementary school, so I thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, update on transportation, um, sorry, I got to my, let's see. Dr. Towery, you seem to, you coming to the, to the forefront, I think you'll be our, our presenter, welcome.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, so this is gonna be basically a continuation of the data we shared out, um, a few weeks ago. It was just over a month ago, so September 20th. Um, we've obviously done some schedule adjustments during that, so we've kind of highlighted those shifts. So, you'll see kind of both the original data, and then the additional weeks before the schedule adjustment was made, and then the schedule adjustment. Um, just a couple kind of updates on the way we're doing the data build-out, and also kind of some continued limitations as we keep working, uh, towards the infrastructure on this. So, essentially, a couple of things that, um, and I want to thank, um, Dr. Schutz, um, Ms. Rowley, Ms. Sherman in Transportation, the three of them really worked, um, quite a bit on doing some additional build-out of formulas in Excel and Google Sheets, that as we pulled in the GPS data, we would have much more, um, automatic analysis of school-level data, morning and afternoon. Um, and then coding was added to, um, split out those elementary shifts, so that we can see that shift one and that shift two. So, those are some, some build-outs pieces that have happened since then. Um, some lingering limitations that we're still trying to figure out the best way how to, um, create some good systems to capture with the way GPS data captures it in the system, is we do have, um, some, what I'll call unconventional routes. So, we have certain buses that, for example, do special education day-school routes that don't, um, tie back well to kind of our standard bell schedules, so those are kind of still causing us some problems. And then we also still have some, um, kind of challenges with GPA, GPS data when, um, we have, for example, unexpected combined routes when a driver is out or bus needs repairs. And so, those are some additional pieces that, um, we're still kind of working on the best way to create a good system for that, so that it's not just a manual override, but that we can, um, have good ways to build out that, um, system-level data analysis on, uh, more in-the-moment manner. Um, I apologize for the typo on that slide, I missed it. Um, but this does basically include the same methodology from last time, um, except for the addition of that shift-specific data when we get into the breakdown of Elementary I and Elementary II. So, you'll kind of see that when we go through it, but it is, um, essentially an apples-to-apples, you know, comparison in the way we're looking at the numbers. So, this is literally the exact same slide you saw last time, those weeks two through six, and where we were. Moving too quick. This is where we were, then you can see week seven, eight, and nine. Um, and then week 10 is obviously where we instituted the shift in time. You can see, uh, almost a matic, um, instantaneous impact in the mornings. Not as much of an impact in the afternoons, I'll get into that a little bit, um, later in the presentation. And do you want to highlight, week 10, of course, was only a 40-school week, um, that was the teacher work day that Monday. Okay, so, again, same, uh, slide as last time, kind of giving this by, um, those quartile intervals. And then same thing again, um, but with the addition of those three weeks, and then weeks 10 and 11 representing that shift, um, post-time change. And I know I highlighted this before, we'll talk about it a little bit more when we get into the level breakdown, but, um, this is tied to the bell schedule, both in the morning and in the afternoon. So, as we know, that afternoon number, um, you know, there's always kind of that slight over-representation the way it's tracked right now, because you probably, by the time you hit a locker, different things. You probably have about a fifth, five-minute variance. Okay, so here we get into the level breakdown. So, this is elementary shift one, and this begins with week seven. So, you can see that. Elementary shift two. And as we get into middle school, this is, of course, where we see our most, um, dramatic, um, shift post-time change at the secondary level. And then similarly, at the high school level. So, it is a lot of numbers to take in. Kind of drawn a couple, um, kind of key highlights that, uh, we see when we look at the data. Um, the initial data does, I think, indicate significant improvement in the mornings with on-time arrivals. Obviously, we've only had two full weeks, um, you know, through Friday of the current, um, piece. And I do want to highlight that this is seen both in the analysis of the GPS data, and in kind of the qualitative feedback that, um, our chiefs and others have been soliciting from building-level administrators. I really wanted to, um, kind of do that gut check on that. I'm seeing this in the GPS data, but is this also, you know, what we're seeing out there? Um, and then challenges in the afternoon do continue to persist, um, but we are seeing some improvements in severity. So, we are seeing more of those tardy buses shifting to an earlier time period of tardiness. Um, the other thing that I think is worth highlighting here is, um, the amount of time gained in the mornings, those interval gaps, and it, in the eventual shift of schedule that we, that was adopted, we see an additional, more time was added essentially between shifts in the morning than in the afternoon. Um, so, I do think that's part of why we're seeing this dramatic improvement in the morning, and then just kind of this very minimal, um, adjustment, at least in terms of overall routes tardy in the afternoon.
Okay, I'm gonna see, is anybody, Dr. Warner?
Could you, um, give me an, uh, two things that I'd like to know about the high school routes, since they still seem to be a little more problematic? Um, I know we transport fewer of our high school students, but about how many students is, you know, 5.5%? It, it looks like maybe we have 8% that are, that are late, up to 30 minutes? How, about how many students does that translate to, and what schools are more primarily impacted? Or is it, is it state, is it division-wide?
I'll have to look at the, I'm gonna grab a pen, because I want to get back to you on. I'll have to do some homework on the school-by-school.
You want to send me that data, that's fine, I just think, I think the board would like to know if there are particular areas that are being impacted to a greater extent than others. So, you can, you can just send us that data, but it does look like, it does look like everything is getting better, which is excellent. Um, it, it, in, at least the getting the kids to school, so that they are where they need to be to start learning. But I would like to know where our problem areas are, and I presume that, um, some of those problems, we're still in the process of putting drivers on board, correct? We still, okay, so, you can just send that data to the board, thank you.
All right, Ms. Young, you said you were, ready?
Thank you for the presentation, um, same question I, I had, was to, um, do school-by-school, and then, um, perhaps also compare from where we were, were to now. And then you mentioned something about week 10, I know, um, week eight was an outlier, week 10, there was one day, teacher's work day. Then what's the deal with week 11? Is it because you don't have all the data for week 11, or did you mention something about week 11?
No, there, I, nothing out of the normal on week 11. I think I was just saying that we just finished week 11 this past Friday, that's probably what.
Gotcha, and, uh, so, I'm doing my part, I send drivers, bus drivers away. I got excited yesterday, um, because last week I had a meeting, Dr. Jones know about the meeting I've had with VDOT, and they came and, um, spent time at Park Ridge, um, Hampton Oaks, and, um, North Stafford High School to look at the lights, because, like I said, I noticed that the light did not change timely. Um, so, yesterday, for once, I saw 10 buses pass through a green light all at once. I was so excited, I drove next to the bus, almost got in trouble by the bus driver, because she's like, what are you doing? So, she did send me an email, um, apologizing, but, um, it's all good. And, um, the light at North Stafford, um, needed to be extended also, so that's what VDOT. It's not a lot, but it's helpful for those lights to be a little longer. So, I would like to just let all my other board members know that it's something that you might want to look at the lights and see if they are working, because the one at Hampton Oaks was not working. And then, um, the other thing, yes, it's getting better, but it's not sufficient for me, I'm knocking on doors and talking to people. There's still a lot of parents that their children are not getting home on time. It was 7:00 when a child showed up, as I was talking to the parent. Um, so, I just need to know for those constituents out there and parents, we just need to know what the bus numbers are, so we will be aware, and then, as a school board member, I could take action, thank you.
Ms. Randall?
Um, Dr. Towery, I mean, I know you're just our analyst here for now, but my question, when I look at, um, elementary school shift one, and you're 15 minutes late in your shift one, why are we still having, like, 2%, 2.5% or what, buses late in your shift one?
Right, so, not looking at, not looking at the specifics, that's an average. So, I would have a hunch, any of that could be related to, and Mr. Fulmer may want to hop in and correct me, but any of that could be related to, if you're shift one, and you, um, end up short drivers for any reason, or if you have a bus. end up short drivers for any reason, or if you have a bus breakdown, if there's a, quite frankly, in both of these weeks, but I know in week 10, we had a couple weeks where, you know, they had opened those new bridges on 95, and it was all chaos for a couple mornings. Any, any of those things is going to have a ripple effect, unfortunately. So.
And it just looks like, both in shift one, and maybe it's still, like you say, the traffic thing too, but it looks like shift one and shift two in elementary in the afternoon got worse, which obviously isn't going to go well for middle and high. But my thing is that, you know, and I mentioned this before in our, one of our meetings this week, is that my kids rode the bus for a couple years, and I know this isn't on you, so I'm just fixing this, but my kids rode the bus for a couple years, and then I was a car rider parent, and I know that when my kids were in high school, and school started at 7:40, I wasn't able to drop my children off at 7:15 and 7:20, and I know that's like really dark 30 for the little ones, but I'm just saying that I don't, and I'm hearing different schools, different times, as far as when they're allowed to drop kids off, sometimes there's a different time rule for parents, a different time rule for buses, but when it's shift one, I want to make sure that we're allowing time for a better success for the rest of the day, when it comes to, you know, drop, starting this thing on time to leave the other schools a better chance of doing better. And I know when I was driving my elementary kids, I could drop off at 8:30, and I, so there, this 30 minutes before school starts, dropping them off as a car parent or even as a bus potential, I'm just thinking that, you know, especially look, I know you were saying like it could be traffic anomalies and stuff like that, but when I look at tier one, elementary shift one, bus arrivals, I just, I'm, I'm a little shocked to see these numbers for the AMs and the PMs, because that sets everyone else up, so. But you, you did describe, and I do recall that, you know, Dr. Jones let us know that there was some traffic congestion issues and that sort of thing too, but it's definitely a concern I have, that our schools are not, and I know this isn't on you, and I know it's more for Chris and Kiba, but I know our schools are not, all elementary schools, shift one, have the same parent drop, same bus drop, shift two, same parent drop, same bus drop, so I'm just a little concerned that we're not even helping ourselves in that regard. But I do appreciate this data, because we, we did need to know what this new time shift, and I'm a little happier for the start, not so happy for the ending, thank you, which is again, not you.
Well, feelings mutual, I was hoping we were going to see a bigger impact when I looked at this data again on the afternoon. I do think, I do think part of that goes back to that kind of where the additional time was added, and I do think the priority was kind of first and foremost on making sure kids are getting to school on time. So.
For sure, I mean, I would, I want my students to have the, you know, we've shortened their, their academic learning time in a day from originally 6:35 to now six hours, I do want to make sure that every minute of those hours is the opportunity and their seat is possible, but I'm, I just like I said, I still have some concerns, but I definitely appreciate this data look, thank you.
Absolutely. Ms. Hallerbeck.
So just, just one, one thing that I noticed here is that the, on week 10 and 11 for the high schoolers, we went up for late, 16 to 30 minutes late, and we're already having a problem with, with students missing, you know, work and homework time and all of this other stuff. And this isn't directed at you, I really appreciate the work that the staff did, this is, this is a fantastic presentation, I'm just a little disappointed that there's a slide that's missing, and that slide is, what would it look like if we were to, this is, this was my, my statement last, at the last meeting, and Dr. Jones, this is what I had asked you, or what I had expressed to you, that I'd asked for the transportation consultant to look at the potential schedule improvements if we were to swap back to the high school pre-COVID schedule, and I was told that, that the consultant would look at it. I was also told that it was being shot to the ad hoc transportation committee, which was established to look at one thing, and then they were going to disassemble in February, so that gives them no time to look at it. So the fact that it's, that, that we don't even have a slide that addresses that is very disappointing to me. And I will leave this to whoever takes a seat after me, but I just wanted to let you know that I'm disappointed it's not here.
Ms. Healy.
Just wanted to follow up with, with Mrs. Hallerbeck, the transportation committee was not tasked with looking at this change in the time, and the reason I am aware of that is because I sat in as an observer in the meeting last week, and they went through the tasks that we charged them with, and that is not one. I thought we had, because I think we were told we had, but if you look at that charter, the resolution that we passed, it was, it was not included, so they are not going to be looking at that, they've got a full plate, you know, without that one. But I, I just want to, to ask Dr. Towery, what happens when our four weeks is up? I mean, are we in a position to go back? I mean, when we, we started this, and I suggested it reluctantly, to get kids on, more students to school on time, and it looks like that's working, but I think we need to be looking at what happens in two more weeks when that, you know, ends by, by what it was started with. This, this afternoon is just wild. I mean, we've got between 10 and 13, almost 13% of the elementary, you know, in, in that first group, 15 minutes or, or less late, but still, if they're the first group being dropped off and they're late, then what's going to happen? They're not going to be making up time, because traffic's just getting worse, you know, as the afternoon goes on. Then the middle schools are 21 to almost 23%, and you get to the high school, and that, I'm looking at that first column, the, the late in the afternoon, we're, we're looking at 32 to almost 34%. So this is good, we're getting them to school, you know, much better on time, but, but, you know, what happened, and I, I know this was asked, but something must be happening in the afternoon, either we're miscalculating when the buses should arrive, in which case that could account for it, but there's just so many, you know, buses, even with this time change, should have worked both ways, I, I would think.
So a couple of things I'd like to point out, just because it's come up in a couple different comments, one of the things to think about as you're looking at this data by interval is, you almost have to look at it in terms of it, so when you see the drop in the 31 to 45 from 15 to 10%, a lot of that drop has been moving over into the 16 to 30 minutes, so that's where, and then into the 22 to 26. So that's what I kind of meant by that shift happening, where you're seeing an increase in the percentages in the quote-unquote earlier tardier ranges, and a decrease in the really, really late ranges, but it is, it's, it's a little bit deceptive when you look at it just in the percentages, because you almost have to go out to the over an hour late and then trace it backwards, in terms of looking at that.
So we're late, we're just not as late.
Correct, correct, that's basically what I was kind of trying to make the point of on that last slide. The, the other thing here is that in that 15 minutes or less late, I'd actually like to look at if, look at the data, look at the literature a little bit to see if there's kind of a standard interval for after the bell ring, you know, if it's, you know, within five minutes of the bell ring is considered on time, or if it's within 10 minutes kind of thing, because I don't know, and this is where, right, I'm not, certainly not a transportation expert per se, so I would need to kind of reference the literature on that. I struggle to know which, which of these that we're counting as late in this 15 minutes or less late would kind of by industry standard be considered late, I would certainly think that anything over 10 minutes would be, I don't know kind of if in that zero to 10-minute or zero to five-minute, what, what of that is kind of considered, you know, that's, that's not an area of expertise I have, and I, I would need to look into that further. And then the last thing I wanted to point out, as, as we're looking at the afternoon tardies, is that, and I have some notes here, Mr. Fulmer may want to clarify this further, but essentially, when we added the time, it wasn't necessarily evenly distributed to try and, you know, kind of meet some additional goals and minimize impact. So you did add, you know, for example, 10 minutes between the gap in the morning between elementary one and two, and 10 minutes in the afternoon, elementary shift two and middle school, you basically had five and five. Middle school to high school, you had like 15 minutes in the morning, but only five minutes in the afternoon kind of thing. So collectively, you have a much more additional time added in the morning, which is I think why we're seeing that significant improvement in the morning and seeing, you know, minimal, if any, collective improvement, very minimal, you are seeing again some of those shifts to earlier tardies from where we were before.
So what happens in two weeks?
Did you want to share out on bus driver?
I mean, the intent was that this would help tide us over until we got our transportation system under control.
Yeah, so I can, I can share some data on where we're at with drivers, and then what we have, have coming, I do have that, and then, but also ask Dr. Jones to kind of share on where we're going to be at in two weeks, because a lot of that is, you know, there's been discussion of, hey, this has provided great results for mornings especially, and, and as Dr. Towery has mentioned in the afternoons, you know, keep in mind that one minute late, which is, a kid's not even going to get out to the ramp in, in one minute from the time the bell rings, so we're counting one minute of GPS that bus is in the lot, one minute after the bell rings, up to 15 minutes, so that's considered in that one to 15 minute, but really up to 10 minutes means they're still on time, because that's when that bus is supposed to pull out of the school, so that's part of the reason we see the inflated numbers in the afternoons. We wanted, and we recognize that, and we've talked about it, but we wanted to be consistent with the way we presented it in the past to show that, and that's why we see the shift, and that qualitative feedback that we've gotten from the principals is, hey, before we did this shift, I might have had, high school specifically, I might have had one or three buses here waiting when the bell rang, now I've got five, I've got seven buses waiting when the bell rang, and they're now getting here shortly after the bell, so more kids are loading up immediately versus having to wait 30 or 40 minutes. Pre-COVID, we had, when we had all the elementary shifts together on the same shift, we had second and third loads for elementary, and those kids were getting home, 5:30 was the last kid we usually dropped off, last student we dropped off each evening, right now, and with this current schedule, our high school kids, the last one, actually yesterday dropped it off at 5:10, today it was 5:20. So as far as the length of time after when school ends of the last kid getting home, we're in that same range that we were pre-COVID, and Mr. Baldwin alluded to that, and we discussed that when we met for six weeks ago, so I just wanted to clarify that, and Dr. Towery did a great job explaining, but I wanted to add on to that.
Can I interrupt you just a second? Also, when you think about that afternoon time, you got to think about, one of the concerns we heard from staff was how much time they're spending after school supervising students, so if we reduce the amount of time the staff are spending after school, even though we still have late buses, but we've reduced the amount of time staff are spending after school supervising students.
Let me go to Dr. Chase first, because I don't think she's had a question yet, let me, sorry, let me.
Yeah, no, no problem. So this is not a question for Ms. Towery, this is a question for Dr. Jones or, or Mr. Fulmer, and it's sort of piggybacking on, on Ms. Healy, so the, the initial plan was this would be happening for four weeks, and then we would have more bus drivers, and then we would go back to the original schedule. Is that going to be feasible? Where are we with, with bus drivers? I think you were about to tell us that, but, but also what happens with the holidays, right? When you hit the holidays, often people want to take a day off, or Amazon needs more drivers, or whatever, so are we going to need to think about doing this for longer than four weeks? And if so, how much instructional time is lost every week that we, we have this schedule?
Dr. Nichols has calculated that, I'm not sure which question you want to answer first, but.
Six hours.
We do, we, we've calculated that if we extend this schedule to the end of the first semester, what impact that would have on instructional hours, I'm, I'm not recommending that we extend the schedule to the end of the year, but we've done those calculations, Dr. Nichols has that data. And as he's coming up, just for clarity, previous conversations, we talked about minutes, days, and, and hours. To simplify it, what I've suggested we focus on is the minimum number of instructional hours required by the state, which is 990, so I've asked Dr. Nichols to talk about it in terms of hours.
Right, the original request was to look through November, approximately November 5th with this change, with that and the reduction in instructional hours, you know, that, that's putting us at about 84 hours over our 990 hours. However, if we continue to extend this through the first semester, and that'd be December 17th, it's going to leave us with about 75 hours over our 990 required hours. And then again, if, if you want, we continue to keep this for the remainder of the school year, I've calculated that out also, which would leave us with about 44 hours over our 990 required state hours of instruction.
Let me give Dr. Chase first.
Yeah, and then I was still waiting to hear where we are with bus drivers.
So some of the improvements you see there is not only because of the time change, but also because we have added drivers, not only since the beginning of the school year, but even since September 20th when we presented this last, so since the beginning of the school year, we've had 27 new drivers on the road today, since the first day of school. Since September 20th, we've had 17 new drivers on the road. We just did another CDL job fair, so we had applicants that had their CDL licenses, this, not a job fair, excuse me, but a training day, so we brought those, we had nine come in on this past Saturday, and over the next two weeks, really, at least three of them this week, but all of them, or, sorry, about eight of them, in the next two weeks will be on the road again, so that's going to be a big boost as well. That's not going to, that's not going to eliminate maybe the need of extending this schedule. So we also have, we've had over 200, probably 250 applicants since the first day of school, and so it's not, the applicants now, now it's getting them through the training, but we have had several classes going, and, and we're keeping a running tally, we're trying to get them through, it's more than just getting them in the door, though, we've got to get them through all the classes, we got to get them adequately trained and make sure they know all the rules and, and they're safe drivers, so our staff are working diligently on that, I know there's nearly in the 45 to 50 range right now, just in the training process, and.
How many do we need in order to go back to the original schedule and actually have students getting to school on time?
Yeah, so I, I want to clarify, because I know when Mr. Baldwin gave that number on September 20th, there were some, you know, some, some, people doing some double takes, so wait a minute, that's more than I thought, it actually lines up almost identical to the number I shared at the beginning of the school year, and I'm going to explain why, so when I gave the number at the beginning of the school year, I said we needed 42-plus drivers, but that was when we had all of our office staff out on the road driving, that's every hourly substitute driver is assigned a route, so we need to get back to the point where those sub-drivers are truly sub-drivers, so that when we have drivers that are sick, drivers that are out quarantined, we have drivers that we can plop in and not consolidate and double routes on the go, on the fly. So ideally, we have budgeted 225 FTEs, but we need at least another 20 sub-drivers on top of that, and right now we have 208 drivers roughly, not including any that are starting tomorrow, that's just as of today, about 208. So we still need 37 to get us up to that comfortable number that replenishes our subpool, that gets our lead drivers back into. that gets our lead drivers back into the office, that gets some of our routing coordinators that are driving back into the office so that they can work on the things that they need to on a daily basis instead of on the road in the mornings and afternoons and then only in the office in the midday. So now until we get all of those, those office staff and those hourly, those subs are still going to be out there, but you know, we do have, our drivers get sick and so we know we're going to have callouts, we're going to have scheduled time off and our drivers have been phenomenal. Mr. Baldwin will tell you, he has never seen dedicated drivers like he has in Stafford County. So I just want to reiterate how phenomenal that has been, but sometimes it's out of their control and they're not able to be here. So we have to plan for that. And in the past, we had some sub-drivers on really bad days, no we didn't, but we could adjust for that. And so we want to get back to that. So really we're shooting for that, you know, 245, 250 FTEs or total drivers, budgeted FTEs plus our substitute drivers.
I just, I know that the transportation has been an issue, but do we have any comparison from prior years before COVID of when kids got home in the afternoon, when the last kid was dropped off? Because I'm hearing from parents that these transportation problems have been ongoing. These aren't new.
Yeah, and so I touched on that a few minutes ago, that pre-COVID, we are clear times when the last kid got dropped. This is the last kid, so it's not 10,000 kids getting dropped off at 5:30, but it could be anywhere from 5:25 to 5:30, 5:40. But in the beginning of this year, we were a lot later. It's obviously every day improved, but with the schedule change for the past two weeks, our clear times, almost probably three or four days straight, it was right about 5:20. Yesterday was actually 5:10. Today was right back around 5:20, 5:22, you know, I believe. So that's the last kid. So predominantly, most of the kids are getting home 30, 40 minutes before that or even sooner.
I know we are still in COVID and it is getting better. I was not for the change of time because, you know, it's reducing instructional time for the kids, but what I'm concerned about and I'm hearing from teachers is that, you know, what are we doing for the students that are missing instruction? I have not, and it may not be you to answer that question, but I have not gotten information on that. Hold it thought for a moment, Dr. Jones. But what are we doing also for those teachers and staff that have to stay with the students until a bus arrive because of the doubling up and it's later and later? And these are the same teachers that have to do their own class schedule and work on their, they go home for hours and have to do the work that they usually would do during the day. So my issue is even if it's just one student staying late, they still have to wait for that one bus. So the fact that we are getting some more students on time is not good enough for me. And yes, we're in COVID and yes, you know, we're quarantining, but this needs to be a wholesome resolution. And I think we need to look at some root causes of what it is and why it is that we're here. It's just not, you know, the buses are late. We just need to look at the schedule itself a little bit better to see if we're doing all we can to get these students on time and get teachers and staff out home on time because we're stretching them then. You know, we will say, yes, we're working better and the bus drivers, you know, they're excellent bus drivers, but we have excellent staff and we have excellent teachers that are stretched thin because they have to do their work. They have to prepare for several types of classes, async, synchronous, all that stuff and then still be on the ramp, look for a bus, wait with the kids. That's a lot of work. So we need to look at the problem, the whole problem, not just certain pieces. That's all I have.
Dr. Jones, I didn't know if you had wanted to respond at all.
I think we all know what the root causes are. Lack of bus drivers, congestion and time for routes. I mean, that's why we, that's why we made the schedule change. And Mr. Fulmer alluded to it, the sweet spot in terms of the number of drivers is between 240 and 250. And again, I will commend the board because one of the things that happened with the new salary field, we, you know, we put 250 out there. So that is, that is a solution, A, to the root cause, which is lack of drivers.
When they call out, it's not lack of drivers.
Well, that's why, that's why the 250 numbers is the appropriate number because that gives us an opportunity to have subs. And right now, we're not there.
All right, Ms. Hallerback, you were next.
Do we, are we requiring our bus drivers to quarantine if there's a suspicion that they've been on a bus with a student who may, may or may not have been diagnosed with COVID?
Yes, if they meet those quarantine protocol, you know, if they're within the three feet with the mask on. I don't want to get into the details. That's more of Dr. Hummer and Collette, but yeah, they are quarantined.
I just wanted to understand how we're, if we're requiring them to quarantine, are we also making them take PTO or their vacation time to do this mandated quarantine?
Yeah, so they would follow the same rules that we apply to the rest of our division, which is going to vary based on their vaccination status and how they're exposed or if it was a family member at home.
Okay, so.
Because we do make, we have, I'm sorry.
If we're looking for ways to retain bus drivers, maybe perhaps maybe this board, maybe the next board, would it behoove the board to look at not requiring them to take their PTO in order to do the mandated quarantine time? Is it something that we could, we could do and be within the law, within fairness and all that other good stuff?
I can't speak to that. I would say we want to encourage all of our employees to become vaccinated because if they are vaccinated, they will not have to quarantine. And so we have drivers, we have, we have staff across the division that have to quarantine due to that. So that's what we're encouraging.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So what about our high school travel kids? Are they now all on time for arrival and pickup and bringing them back to their base schools? Is that, how is that? Because that's not shown anywhere here, so I don't know what that looks like right now.
Yes, so I'm going to ask, Dr. Nichols probably can speak to that better than I can. I know it has improved. I know generally we're getting them there to the school on time. There's still challenges sometime getting them back to the base school, but that improves really on a daily basis as we add drivers. Like I've said, we've added 27 since beginning of the year and I think I said, I think it was 17 just since September 20th. So that's improved. I'll let Dr. Nichols, you know, probably explain that a little bit better.
Okay. I have a second part.
Quantitative data would tell you that the morning has improved. It's not where it needs to be by any means. It has improved. The afternoon, the middle runs based on the adjustments and some of the schedule has made some issues at some schools and some runs. Brookpoint to North Stafford might be later than what you see, of course, Mountain View or Colony Forge getting to North Stafford. So it very much differs based on which school and where they're coming from. And so there is some problem there. It has improved. We don't have as many, but we still have problem areas.
Okay. And are we still having kids stay at their base school to participate virtually versus in person for the programs that they're in?
That was an option, but when we started improving our times and travel times and that pretty much into the, I think it was the fourth week, it cut it down, yes.
So there's nobody that's participating virtually?
I can't say that for sure that somebody's not participating while they're still waiting for their bus, but they are traveling.
Okay.
Some kids were watching their class on their phone while they were on the bus.
And are we doing, I know one of the complaints was about feeding them. Are we doing better about that when the kids get to their base school?
Yes, and when they leave. And again, Brian Williams has been very generous to have lunches ready for them before the lunch shifts even start, so they could eat before on their way.
Dr. Towery, one of the things Dr. Warner had asked was to get maybe an idea of what schools are consistently affected, but also what bus routes are or bus numbers? And is it because they don't, they're an unassigned route or whatever? But if we could get that, like what buses are consistently as well as what schools are affected? And if we could also get the travel school issue to see if there's, you know, maybe something else. And we're done with the, the bus line service that we hired? We don't have that anymore?
We don't.
Okay. So one comment that I've heard even from parents that have sport kids in the high school is that they know when they're playing a team from Stafford County, they can count on everything to be late for their games and that sort of thing. And if they're playing someone from outside of the county coming in, they know they're going to be able to compete on time. So I know our middle school and high school sport programs are also affected, especially like when we look at these kids not even getting home on time in the afternoons at such, at every level. Like I said, I'm struggling a little bit with elementary shift one. It just, you know, has another effect on kids and their families. So, but I'm interested in finding out what those buses are and the schools affected. Thank you.
So let me just ask a question about how you want that data because there's, I certainly encourage you, if you want to look, I use the term look behind the curtain, to see what our, our program evaluation staff are doing with the versa trans system to look at the data. I don't, I don't know the best way to do that, but if you're interested in doing that in two by two meetings, we can make that happen. If you're interested in meeting with Dr. Towery and Dr. Schutz, we can make that happen so you have a real rich view of how we're gathering the data. I'll certainly offer that to the board members if you're interested in it.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Healy.
I just wanted to follow up on Ms. Young's comment and question about what are we doing for the students that have been late since the beginning of the year? It's great, we're not as late now, but they lost so much time. And I know I've raised this, you know, Ms. Young's raised it before, other members of the board have raised this. This isn't with you, but you know, I want to know what we're doing to help them catch up. And this would be the ones that missed half of the first block or the entire first block. I mean, I, you know, we've asked this question many times and I don't recall an answer. So if there's not an answer tonight, I understand, but I would like to have that answer because those students, I mean, we hear from the parents saying, my child failed the quiz. My child's not there. They're not getting the instruction because they were late. And even if we could wave that magic wand and everybody was on time, you know, starting tomorrow, those students would still be significantly at a loss because they were late for an extended period of time.
I know that we've answered that question. I don't know if we've done it in writing, but we've done a number of things. We've recorded lessons. We've provided flexibility for kids to make up work. Dr. Nichols may want to speak to this, but the real solution is to try to eliminate kids being late, which is, which is some of the data you saw tonight. So I think the ultimate solution is how do we prevent kids from being late to school? Period. And I think the data you've seen tonight is that we've done that, we've drastically reduced the number of students that are late, which is the ultimate solution.
I've heard from parents that their kids were failing, so I would like to know what we're doing. Yeah.
As Dr. Jones said, we're recording lessons so kids can go back through Canvas. They're putting their lessons in Canvas so they can go in and catch up. Teachers are staying after. They were utilizing the time that they had kids there waiting earlier on before we've reduced some of it, but there's still plenty of kids staying after, who can stay after. They're reducing assignments. They're looking at essentials. Specific, the assignment might be a little shorter to help them make, catch up. They're working with buddies with kids. They're trying to mediate during the day when they can. Our teachers are doing an awful lot to try and work with every student to be successful. You're absolutely right.
Can you repeat what you just said? Can you repeat what you said? You said the teachers are working.
Our teachers are working very hard to assist their students in making up the work that was missed. That is an off, I mean, granted, missing an hour of instruction, missing a half an hour.
Let me add this too. I mean, I know you've heard this. At the middle schools, we built intervention periods. So there's a 45, I'm not sure the exact time.
30 minutes.
30 minute intervention period that's built in the day so kids can make up work. When buses were late, what many middle schools did is they adjusted their intervention period at the beginning of the day so students didn't miss instruction. Since they're arriving on time, I'm sure schools have adjusted to not have the intervention period at the beginning of the day.
Teachers are adjusting their lessons. Again, they were doing more review within the first part of the classroom, some assignments in the first part. Some kids were, most, majority of their class were getting there, but within 20 minutes later or so, they were adjusting, flipping some of their classrooms on how they were doing their assignments. They were being as creative as they could within the confines that they have. But all our administrators are working with their students and being lenient on grading, giving benefit of doubt as far as the mastery of the content.
All right. I'm going to make a final comment. Final ones, reiterating what Dr. Nichols of the teachers and stuff that I have talked to. They are pouring into these students and it's taking a lot of their time. They are also being asked as students continue to join our division, I, sorry, it's another way to go back to growth. Talked to many schools. One of the elementaries recently said, every week I have one to two kids joining our classrooms now. We are not getting smaller and that is an additional burden on our, on our teachers, but it's also because they care. So they are working, they are our front line on helping with learning loss and they will continue to be. The board's job is to figure out how to minimize that impact. We are trying to manage this part of your job, of the job that we are giving to our teachers. We are trying to get the students there on time. It's a difficult job, as you all have seen. We are trying to figure that out, but we are not missing, or I'm not, the impact that you are making on these students who are late, who are upset. When parents write to me, I also am asking how their student is reaching out to you because it doesn't need to come to the board member. It needs to be on the students to come and work with you. I want you all to be very clear on the time that it takes to do that and I sincerely appreciate it because I know you love your students and you don't want to see them fail. Going back to transportation itself, the reason I think the request by Dr. Warner is reiterated by many people or many board members about the targeting of where are our problems? The reason that's so important is that will help Mr. Fulmer, Mr. Baldwin target where to put in our new drivers. That is actually helpful information we can be feeding to them because it is great to get new drivers. Let's deploy them in the places we need. So I think that's why the board, or at least this board member is very, wants to know that information, but really it'd be nice for me to know it, but it's really, is it being shared with transportation as we deploy drivers? Because we want to make sure we are deploying in the right ways with the most impact as we continue to build. So I think that's why that's so important to the board.
Can I, is it okay if I respond to that just real quickly? Because I did, I jotted down some notes as we continued asking questions along and one of the things I did want to mention that won't get into a specific school by school analysis, I think Dr. Jones makes a good mention of, you know, we're happy to kind of sit down and kind of walk through those pivots so we can adjust it by different things. But there are two things that I do know from the little bit we've played in the pivots and one of those is we do see, as I think it was Ms. Randall mentioned, but as one of you certainly mentioned, the role, the impact of unassigned bus routes is, as we would all expect, to be where we see some of our highest, you know, tardies. So as we continue to build that bus driver pool, that should assist with that. And then the other thing is, and this I would have to verify, but I know when we looked at the first set of data, you definitely see the regional impact. So those schools. So those schools that have longer bus routes, those are the ones that typically, you know, if they pull from a larger geographic area, and this was actually something that Mr. Baldwin helped me better understand as I was kind of building my background knowledge of, you know, public school transportation. The, the impact is that much more severe anytime something goes wrong, right? When you're in a more condensed geographic area, it's quicker to get someone out. If you, a bus breaks down, it's easier to do those things. If you are way out towards Hartwood, or way out, you know, Brook Road, or some of these more rural areas, and something goes wrong, it, it takes longer to adapt from that, right? So those are just kind of two trends I did want to highlight before we get into kind of the school-by-school specifics.
All right. If we could get how many unassigned routes we have not right now sent to us, that would be great.
There, there is one compelling question that hasn't been answered, and I think Ms. Healy asked a question. What happens after four weeks? This, I'm, I'm just going to share a thought here. I know that anytime there's a change for a family, a disruption, it creates a problem. So I, I would think carefully about, if our families have adjusted to this new schedule and it's working, do we want to make yet another change? Again, I, I'm not, I'm not making a suggestion one way or the other. I, I'm simply suggesting that our families have gotten accustomed to the schedule. So if, if, if I had made my original recommendation, it would be that we would have continued the schedule through the end of the first semester, for consistency's sake. So again, I'm not, I'm not making a recommendation here, I'm just making a statement that I think our families have adapted to the new schedule, our staff have adapted to the new schedule. So with that, the board may want to decide if they want to continue the schedule or change it.
Ms. Healy?
Madam Chairman, since the relief is not immediately in sight, and we're not meeting again until November ninth, I suggest that the board continue this. And, and I say this reluctantly, but through this, this semester. I, if, if we get all these bus drivers on board and, you know, things look good, we could look at it. But, you know, I'm, I'm more concerned about going backwards and having more students be late for school. And I'd like the transportation to focus on those after-school runs, where we still have some, what I consider, unacceptably high numbers of late buses.
Thoughts of the board members?
Well, I, I think we need to, like Ms. Healy said, I think we need to give this more time, because there's still problems with the schedule. And we're still onboarding more bus drivers. If everything goes perfectly, it takes six weeks to onboard a bus driver from start to finish if he doesn't have, if they don't have their CDL. So given that we're still looking at, we need another, what, twenty bus drivers?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty. Thirty, so.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
No, we have two thirty-seven.
No.
Mm-mm.
We have two.
To get to where we need to be.
Thirty-seven more.
Oh, we need thirty-seven, sorry.
We need thirty-seven.
I can't read my own handwriting. That's a lot of bus drivers, that, and those unassigned routes are clearly contributing to this, this dilemma. So we, we need to just get more bus drivers. And we're, I think that Mr. Fulmer, Dr. Jones, keep up, Mr. Baldwin are, are working very hard to, to make that happen.
I think I'm, I'm not thoroughly inclined to go with this, but my other thought though, is that while we are thinking forward to this semester, we also need to have some sort of a planning time to think about and sit down and decide what to do for the next semester. Because as Dr. Jones says, our families are, are planning. They need to know for their childcare, for their work schedules, kids' work schedules. You know, this has just been not a very happy start for, not on transportation, but for our families in regards to transportation. So while we look to making a decision about this, I also would like to know when, and sooner, not next semester, do I want that scheduled made? Sooner, about next semester.
Thoughts? So I didn't support the schedule change because it took away instructional time. And so I, I have to agree with Ms. Healy, I would be, I, I, right, we're between a rock and a hard place. And so do we, you know, do we support this change and take away more instructional time? Or do we not support this change and have that group of students who's already suffering all of the, the lost instructional time that they had from being late, continue to do that? And that's, that's tough.
Do you need to know from everyone? I'll, I'll go. I did not support this change either, and it, it wouldn't matter my vote, because you're in the majority in terms of making the call, if you want to continue this or not. I, I would rather see more students on time. That's the issue I had before, and I still have the same issue, that we have some on time and not all. And the ones that are not on time, we, we may hear of some parents that are, are used to sending emails, but there are a lot of parents that I just happen to run into that are telling me that, hey, my child hasn't been in, you know, on time for like, the whole semester, and is failing a class. So that, that's my major concern right now for those kids.
All right. I do not believe that we are ready by the November, uh, I'm sorry, without my calendar for me. Eighth, or the fifth, I'm sorry, without my.
I think it was actually the fifth before the meeting.
Oh, sorry, looking at the, okay. So it was to go through the fifth.
Right.
We do not have our next meeting until the ninth, so we do have to make some kind of decision. If you want to make it go, if, if you, if you think that we will get enough people through, we can do it through Thanksgiving, if that gives you, or we can go and reevaluate. At, on the ninth of November, we can have a work session and see if there is more drivers coming on the horizon. I'm coming up with ideas. And the buses, I guess.
If we go through Thanksgiving, we've got three weeks left. Is it really worth the disruption to the families and the, the whole change is going to require? I mean, this was not the intent, it certainly wasn't my intent when we started this. But seeing these results and seeing more of the students there when the bell rings, you know, I'm, I'm willing to extend it so that those same students who were late the first two months of school are not going to be late for another month. And, and I, I got to believe it's harder on the teachers, because the teachers are trying to catch these students up. It's hard on the, it's hard on everybody. But I, I absolutely want to have the plan that, starting next semester, we're there all day.
You know, I'm, I'm very distressed about the loss of instructional time. I think we all are, I think that's been clear. But I don't want to risk having a, changing the schedule back and then having a setback. I, I don't want to have to make those changes unless we know that we are ready to make those changes. So I, I, I think that we, we probably would be wise to just leave this in place through Thanksgiving and, and see where we are.
The problem is, we don't meet after Thanksgiving. We meet on the ninth, and then we don't meet until the middle of December. So then we've got another lag. And communicating those changes needs to go out well in advance, if we're going to change this.
So Dr. Jones made the comment.
Mm-hmm.
Not to disrupt the schedule, that is best to keep it. So we are deliberating what now?
Mm-hmm.
Continue through the rest of the year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Through the semester.
Semester.
Through twelve seventeen.
Okay. All right.
I think that makes the most sense.
But we need our work session to discuss next.
As I said, I suggested one on November ninth. I wasn't, is that amenable, to have a work session on the November ninth?
What's the work session for?
I guess, transportation and updates on looking towards the next semester.
Can they send the information?
Yeah.
Can they send us the information? And we could look at it? Why, why do we need a work session?
So we make a decision?
So that we don't have all of this discussion always up here. I think there's a lot that needs to be looked at. I will schedule one, or at least put a placeholder, and we will see what, where people are at that point.
Ms. Hazard, can you also put a placeholder for the, the meeting that we have in December? I, I suspect that we're not going to have a whole lot of data back by November ninth. It's only two weeks away.
Okay, then suggest a date.
So, so before our next meeting in December? What is that, the seventh?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. Does that give us enough time to notify parents? I mean.
Notify parents that they're going to have three days.
So.
No, no, no.
No.
You have the whole semester, like the next semester chart.
About what we're doing with the schedule, basically.
All right, do you want to go with November thirty?
Special call.
Madam Chairman, I'd like, I'd like to take the position that it is the school board's intention to go back to the schedule, that we expect this transportation problem to be resolved by next semester. That's, what, four, five months in? If we can't resolve this by next semester, then I, I, I don't know what to say. It sounds like we're on track. We've got all these bus drivers applying, we've got a lot on boarded now, there's more coming in. We need, we need to be working to doing our job the way we should be doing it, not just trying to, you know, fill in, fill in the gaps. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to work with this, but I, I do not want it to be, look at next semester. I think we should absolutely say we will be back on schedule next semester.
I think we're going to, I, I would advise this board to look at whatever data we have, because if the bus drivers do not materialize, we got to know that early rather than later, in my opinion. But that is going to be. Do you want to, can I do a placeholder on November thirty? Because I think November ninth is pretty quick.
Yes.
The sixteenth is not workable, because that is the VSBA. The twenty-third is the night before the Thanksgiving break, and the thirtieth would be the next option.
That sounds more, a little more reasonable.
Yeah.
I will put a placeholder on that for now, and then if there may be other issues, because we will be meeting, I believe, with the Board of Supervisors. I'm going to look at Mr., Dr. Jones.
December seventh.
December seventh. So if we need to also discuss growth and other issues for that particular meeting, that might be a good planning meeting as well, for us to be prepared, fully prepared for that meeting, although I know Mr. White will be very well-prepared, but also for us to review again. All right.
And Madam Chair, for the thirtieth, what time would you like to start?
Board members. Is six?
Well, if you can tell me now, it would. Okay.
Okay. All right. All right, we will await the time TBD. All right. We are going to move on to Citizen Comments. Board, would you all like a five-minute break, or no? Or you want to keep going? Yes, okay. Five minutes, be back here by nine-thirty. Thanks. Welcome back to the School Board meeting. We will continue the meeting with our citizen comments. I will go ahead and issue the invitation. We have several citizens that have signed up. I will read them out, but let me give the invitation first. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker or group. Speakers are encouraged to provide a copy of their comments to the board clerk. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. The chair reserves the right to restrict total citizen comment for a predetermined maximum of number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy 1113. When you come forward, the green light will come on when you start speaking. When the, when the yellow light comes on, that means you have one minute remaining. When the red light comes on, that means it is time to finish your comments. I will read from the list of people who have signed up first, and then issue an invitation for any who, who want to continue. So I'm just going to go in order, I'm going to call off the first five names, and then I will move forward from there. So first Jeffrey Trigger, then Julie Param, Kathy Butler, Terry Potter, and Ann Adams. Thank you for coming this evening.
Sorry, I forgot the paper copy on my desk, so. Hello, my name is Jeffrey Trigger, and I live in the George Washington District. Tonight, the Stafford Education Association has presented data to the school board expressing a need for a break. I'm expressing the same opinion. The staff needs a break. If we're talking about doing what is right for students, then we absolutely need a break. And here's why. During the last three school years, every single staff member has had a different schedule every single year. This year alone, we've had a schedule change that the board says is only temporary. What comes after that schedule? Who knows? As Dr. Nichols just stated, with these changes, we still have late buses, and we are working ourselves to death to remediate or catch students up. It's one more thing we have to deal with the staff members. Speaking of one more thing, there are very few substitutes. This means if staff is covering classes during planning periods, or if there is no staff, we have pair of professionals. They're being pulled from their courses to cover the needed classroom. This places an extra burden onto all the staff. I would like to mention that the pay for covering a class is thirty dollars, which is less than a substitute would be paid for the coverage. It literally saves the county fifteen dollars a day to have staff cover courses instead of getting a substitute, as substitutes make one oh five dollars per day. Makes you think it's not a coincidence. It costs a staff member seventy minutes of their workday, meaning most likely another seventy minutes away from their family at home. Other duties have been added. This year has seen a jump in the number of car riders that come to school. The Car Rider Alliance would block roadways and bus entries if, to schools, if the staff were not out there giving up planning time to enforce the traffic rules. I'm one of them. Not to mention that the number of people needed for bus duty has also increased throughout the county, again, taking away planning time from the staff. Lastly, I'm tired of hearing that the staff is lazy, entitled, and uncaring. I love my job, I love my students. However, at some point, I do have to take care of my own mental health before it becomes a physical health problem. Other staff members have to do so as well. Please consider a revised schedule to help everyone's mental well-being.
Good evening, Board. My name is Julie Param. I teach at Hampton Oaks Elementary School. I live in the Griffiths-Widewater District. And I'm here to support SEA's proposal. I'm what's known as an old-timer. I'm beginning my fortieth year of public school teaching. I have never seen school staff as discouraged, demoralized, and stressed out as I have this year. Every single day, I have people crying. At least once a week, I have somebody saying, what's going to happen if I resign? Every day, more is piled on our plates, and there's no end in sight. We're like that proverbial frog that's slowly boiling to death as the temperature is gradually raised. Medication strategies, click. Extraordinarily stressed-out and emotional kids, click. Transportation challenges, click. Concurrent teaching, click, 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 click. We are literally drowning in simmering water. Every staff meeting, in every superintendent's email, we hear self-care. Take care of yourselves. Make sure you're, you know, doing what you need to do to keep yourself healthy. Take care of yourself. How do we do it? Take a personal day or sick day? Well, no, you can't do that, because we're in homesubs. Practice a hobby or go out and exercise? Well, you know, you got extra work you have to do after school because you don't have any planning time during the day. because you don't have any planning time during the day. Keep yourself hydrated, eat well? Well, when you're lunch hour, it's only twenty minutes, and you don't get a bathroom break for the entire day, that's pretty hard to do. I'll be honest with you. Three days is not much, but it's better than nothing, and it's a good start. So please consider approving this policy. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Jones, and esteemed colleagues. I'm Kathy Butler, and I reside in the Rock Hill District. I'm an admin assistant at A.G. Wright Middle School and the president of the SCA. I'm here tonight to talk to you about mental health and why the three days are needed. Mental health is a taboo subject on any given day. Most people don't like to talk about it or admit that they are struggling, and there's a lot of people who don't believe our staff members are struggling. But I'll tell you, we are. I used to think I was an emotionally stable person until COVID. I can freely admit that I am not. I have good days, and I have bad days. On the bad days, I lean on those I trust the most to get me through the day. I go home at night and cry in my bathtub with the door locked, as I'm sure most of my colleagues do. I want you to close your eyes for a minute and think about to the last school year. Virtual learning was a task we all took on. Teachers and staff worked tirelessly during classes, in the evenings, on weekends, answering parent and student emails, sometimes at midnight or early hours of the mornings. Now open your eyes. Fast forward to today. Our teachers are still working tirelessly. Our staff are still working tirelessly. Why? For our students. We never stop. We just keep going for our students. We need a break. Our students need a break. We are still struggling with the workload, with the discipline, no substitutes to fill much-needed classes, giving up planning periods to cover a colleague. Staff just can't catch their breath due to the ever-changing schedule and tasks that keep being added, sometimes at the last minute. These three days will give the staff much-needed days to recharge, to come back better and stronger for our students. For those who are vocally against these three days, for those who have been extremely vocal on social media, I'd like to invite you to please come into my building, to any building, and be prepared to work, because we need substitutes. Subs in our building, talk to the staff. They'll tell you their stories and how the struggles are real. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Terry Potter. I'm a bus driver. And yeah, that was me in the video, in case you didn't know. I haven't been here in a year and a half to talk to you in person, so. I sat down last night to write out my thoughts. Oh, I'm in the George Washington District now. I sat down to write my thoughts down last night, and my head was such a mess. I couldn't even get my thoughts together. I was so exhausted, so mentally drained. So I'm winging it tonight with notes, and I don't do very well when I wing it. But part of this new time schedule that we have, we don't have time for ourselves. I talk about self-care, take care of yourself. I have no time to go to the barn, which doesn't bode well when you're trying to get a certification to be a therapeutic writing instructor. No time for bowling. I have a bowling tournament this weekend. I haven't picked up a bowling ball since March. No time for piano, which is kind of good, because I haven't practiced the piano in, I don't even know how long. The time schedule is helping with getting kids to school on time for a lot of them, but it's just not giving us any time in the middle of the day. Our training time has been cut down to like two hours, two and a half hours. We don't have time to go anywhere, do anything, and we're getting home late. I was your five-ten bus last night. I had a student driver driving, and actually, we did really well. You all keep talking about learning loss, but you've cut the day by an hour, and you've then cut more. We need to be back on a full day. Get those kids in school all day. One of the reasons we don't have drivers is pay, but the lack of respect, the disrespect, and the damage to the bus. I have had so much damage to my bus this year. Pencil holes, ketchup everywhere. It's just ridiculous. We are training. We are training Saturdays, evenings, twelve-hour days, and it's still not good enough for y'all. We have put about thirty drivers on the road. I have one going on the road tomorrow. We are just mentally and physically exhausted. Please, for all that is good and holy, give us our lives and our sanity back and consider going back to the old schedule next year. This new one just is not working for Stafford County. Thank you.
Before Ann, before you start, you can keep coming forward. I'm just going to call out the next names, just so everybody can be ready to go. Jen Robinson O'Brien, Michelle Wickman, Dana Brown, and Philip Horning. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Ann Adams. I live in the George Washington District, and I teach middle school English at A.G. Wright. I'm in my twenty-ninth year of teaching the children of Stafford County. I went in to attend a funeral last week of a gentleman I knew for over thirty years. But as soon as I learned that his funeral was on Friday, I knew I couldn't go. My school had five teachers without substitutes last Friday. I need to arrange to have a plumber fix two faucets in my house. When am I supposed to do that? Isn't that why we have personal days? I can't ask a relative to help me, because none of them live within fifty miles. My family consists of friends at school and the folks behind me who are wearing red. I shouldn't feel guilty taking a day off for these reasons, but I do feel badly, because my colleagues will most likely be asked to give up their planning time to cover my classes. My uncle's funeral is November sixteenth at Arlington National Cemetery. I should be able to go there and be with my family without feeling guilty about it. I have health issues. Last January, my blood pressure was in stroke range. I was diagnosed with a heart condition. I have worked hard to change my diet, exercise more, and lose weight. But, and because of those efforts, my cardiologist determined I don't need to be on blood pressure medication right now. I'm concerned about my health. I am so afraid of getting a breakthrough case of COVID. Due to my age and health issues, I would probably end up in the hospital. With teaching middle school, we have lots of students who are not old enough to be vaccinated right now. I have given most of my adult life to this county. We are in a global pandemic. We are not, this is not business as usual. And more and more, I feel that my job will be the death of me. If we get the day off on November twelfth, I hope, Dr. Jones, you will arrange with the Health Department to make sure we can get our booster shots on November eleventh. This would alleviate us having to take days off to get over side effects. I am very concerned about the health of my colleagues. We cannot take care of our students if we don't take care of ourselves. We need these mental health days to take care of all of us. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jen Robinson O'Brien, and I am from the George Washington District, and I teach at North Stafford High School. I want to share my story of this year to give you a bit of perspective. First and foremost, I consider myself a veteran and a master teacher. I've been a department chair, a teacher trainer for UMW, as well as a mentor for numerous teachers, and I spent five years training all the new teachers at the county level during the New Teacher Institute. I give this background to emphasize, I'm a veteran. I've been there, done that, and can walk into most classes and handle that block. But this year, this year is the hardest year I have ever taught. And I include my first year, when I had a principal who decided that I needed to stay till midnight on several school nights, because that was other duties as assigned. I am teaching four blocks. Now, yes, I was approached, and yes, I had the opportunity to say no. But when an eleventh-grade inclusion teacher leaves for another position, two classes were left without a teacher. Two classes that needed to pass two SOLs after having the last time they took the SOLs back in eighth grade. And remember, this is an inclusion class. In a class of twenty-six, I have six Ls. I have ten IEPs. Ninety percent of this class is, needs serious reading intervention, and several are seniors who failed English eleven. Oh, yes, and my collaborative teacher, she's amazing. But when she's out, no sub is given. You'd think I'd have time to meet with my collaborative teacher or my mentee during the generous time in the morning, except I'm part of six PLCs, of which I lead three. And let's not forget the five oh fours and the IEPs. I have been limping for a year. Last year, I didn't have time to see the doctor, because honestly, until I couldn't walk, my students came first. I had hybrid classes, and it was super challenging to have a substitute come in. Most of the time, if that happened, my students were just sent to an internet cafe. But I finally got answers in September. Surgery was required. A surgery, in an ideal world, I would be back in the classroom within a few days. I scheduled it on a Friday, so my recovery time would be my time, not school time. Unfortunately, my body said, no, that's not cool. I bled for four days. Where I was supposed to take two days off of work, I ended up missing six. I ended up in the ER and needed to get more sub days. And while I was bleeding and in pain, I had to scramble for those sub plans. And there was no rest until that was done, and I did it not knowing if I would have a sub to fill that position. Because remember, I teach four classes. Subs don't get paid extra. I didn't know if one of my colleagues would be called in or if students would have it. Do you know how humiliating it is to break down in pain and nausea in front of a class? Oh, man. All right. Please read the end of my comments, because I address new teachers, and I'm dealing with this. New teachers, what about them?
Thanks, Jen.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Jones, my name is Michelle Wickman. I'm a resident of Hampton Oaks, a parent of two children in SCPS schools, and a teacher at North Stafford World's Greatest High School. I'm speaking this evening to reiterate my email request from October seventeenth on behalf of SCA, asking that you consider amending the school calendar to support employee mental health, as many surrounding school divisions have done. Every day, I hear from educators who are reaching burnout. I regularly learn of yet another person who has left their position in the county for something outside of education. We can't continue to give so much with so little recuperation or planning time. It's just not sustainable. It might seem simple that educators could use their own sick or personal days to mitigate the burnout, but the reality is that taking a day off is not a simple task in the education world. We're facing a severe sub shortage and spending hours making sub plans, knowing one of your colleagues will likely have to give up their planning so you can be out. The entire process is inherently counterproductive to mental health. So here's what you can do to help. First, I'd like you to approve the proposed calendar changes, making November twelfth, February eighteenth, and April fifteenth days off for the entire division. Compensate hourly workers so they don't lose wages. I know arrangements like this have been made before. Additionally, Monday and Tuesday, November twenty-second and twenty-third, should be asynchronous learning days, and all staff should have the ability to work from home on these days. Attendance is historically low on the two days before Thanksgiving, so making the days asynchronous provides staff with additional planning time, and it gives traveling students the ability to complete their work outside of school. This should please many families while also eliminating the need for educators to play catch-up after the break due to a large number of students having been absent. I've been advised by several of you that the acting superintendent has the ability to make schedule changes without consulting the school board. However, it doesn't seem that the board has been particularly supportive of such decisions in recent history, so I respectfully request that you all be involved in this decision and that you make it tonight to allow everyone sufficient time to adjust. You've had supporting data since last night, because nearly sixteen hundred SCPS employees completed a survey for SCA in under seventy-two hours over a weekend. And over ninety-five percent of those employees indicated support for the changes that I just outlined. This is the highest survey participation and the most overwhelming support in a survey that SCA has seen in eight years. That speaks volumes. I spend my days teaching students to consult the experts in their decision-making, and I ask that you'll do the same. Listen to educators telling you that we can't keep this up without a breaker. I promise you that we will continue to lose people. Make a decision to publicly support the mental health of SCPS staff, and you'll be responsible for improving the morale of the entire division. Please remember that educator working conditions are student learning conditions that many of us are also SCPS parents and that we vote to. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dana Brown. I live in the Rock Hill District on forty-one St. Williams Way. I'm going the other way on this. I'm asking you to vote no on closing down school three more times this year. The acting superintendent is asking for three separate additional days so that all staff may focus on their overall well-being. To be clear, he means every employee in Stafford schools, not just teachers. This is over and above what we already offer. Sick days, vacation days, mental wellness program, floating holidays, winter break, spring break, and various other holidays. I got some updated numbers today. I learned that the cost to the county to educate a child every day is about nine hundred thousand now, a little higher than I thought, just in salaries. And I'm told that's a conservative number. It's probably closer to a million dollars a day in salaries. Our school calendar is very carefully planned. Another, not one, not two, but three unscheduled school closures would be sacrificing almost three million dollars in forfeited scheduled instructional time, days that we still have to pay staff for, and we get no teaching time in return. Aren't we in the middle of a learning loss crisis? Right now, Stafford's math pass rates are only fifty-four percent, down eighty-three percent from the year before. History and social studies also at fifty-four percent, down from eighty percent. Other scores are similar. In a very testy exchange with the Board of Supervisors recently regarding questionable curriculum, the acting superintendent said, quote, "We are trying to recover from the pandemic, so much of our focus is on unfinished learning." Quote, "If we continue to get questions among our staff about this, I will direct them not to respond." Quote, "We have important work to do to make up for the last eighteen months." That's where our focus is. Quote, "We're focused on unfinished learning. That's the highest priority among our staff. That's our number-one priority." So how is three more school shutdowns the answer? How do more school shutdowns help our atrocious SOL scores? How does redirecting three million dollars worth of our kids' instructional time to three extra staff holidays the answer? We are barely two and a half months into the school year. We owe the kids, and they can't afford this. Maybe later, we can look at this, when we have something to celebrate, when we've put a dent in the learning loss. Right now, we're just not there. And I want to thank Ms. Randall for bringing up the travel schedule. On a different note, I'm on the Transportation Committee, and I have also asked for that and have been unable to get it. So thank you.
Actually, I think Mr. Horning's next. That's okay. And then I was going to call off the next names. Kristy Jones, Stephanie Mayorka, Christina Lewis, and Nicole Doolin. I think Mr. Fouth had to leave. If he is here, feel free to come forward, but I think he said he had to leave, so. Go ahead, Mr. Horning.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Jones. My name is Philip Horning, and I am vice president of Friends of Wide Water State Park, and our boards layers on to Stafford County Public Schools. We are here this evening to lend our support to the Stafford County Public School Resolution before you this evening. With growing international concern about worldwide climate change, in 2020, the Virginia General Assembly revisited its commitment to climate change education, an inflection point for the Commonwealth. In February 2020, the General Assembly adopted Item 374, which initiated a Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation Environmental Education Collaboration at Wide Water State Park with Stafford County Public Schools, the Friends of Wide Water State Park, and interested stakeholders. As early as 2008, Mike Frack, Stafford County Schools K-12 facilitator, began conducting environmental scientific observation. environmental scientific observations with North Stafford High School students on the land later to become Wide Water State Park. On April 4, 2019, at his invitation, the Friends of Wide Water State Park made a PowerPoint presentation at the Stafford County's Public Schools Stars for STEM Career Showcase, highlighting Wide Water State Park's unique wildlife and ecosystem. After viewing the presentation, then superintendent Scott Kishner initiated an environmental education collaboration with the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation, Stafford County Public Schools, and the Friends of Wide Water State Park. We have never looked back. The resolution before you this evening is a result of a joint meeting we had with Dr. Jones, Dr. Nichols, Mike Pratt, and several members of the school board. State Senator Scott Serval, other members of the General Assembly, DCR, Virginia Public Schools, and the Friends of Wide Water State Park are committed to providing an opportunity for any graduate to earn a Virginia Department of Education Diploma Seal of Excellence in Science and Environment. This seal formally recognizes an acquired skill set for future employment in fields related to climate change. We look forward to working with you together. Thank you so much.
Kristi Jones, school counselor at Hampton Oaks Elementary School. I live in the Acquahia District. I want to do my best to speak on behalf of those educators who could not make it tonight because they are working a second job or grading papers or so mentally, emotionally, and physically tired that they haven't been able to move once they've got home. First, the answer to the bus driver shortage is more bus drivers. In these uncertain times and with so much inconsistency in the last 20 months, changing the times of the school day does not help. Now, earlier tonight, I heard you all discussing whether we're going to go back to the times that we had two weeks ago, or do we want to keep what we have? I would like to respectfully request that we keep what we have for the rest of the year, because we need that consistency in this time when we've had so much inconsistency. Our students and our staff cannot take any more changes to the schedule. Last year, elementary had three different changes to the schedule, and yes, we handled it with grace, but there's only so much grace that we have left in us. Second, educators are at their breaking point. Correction, they are broken into a million little pieces. We have nothing left for ourselves, much less our families at the end of a school day. There is a quote that reads, "You can't pour from an empty vessel." We are all running on residue. There is absolutely nothing left. Third, please refrain from talking to educators about self-care and wellness when you continue to put more on our plates. We are doing more than we've ever done, all while following CDC guidelines and during a global pandemic. Now, don't get me wrong, I will take those three days that you are recommending, and I will take care of my personal mental health on those days, as well as those asynchronous days as well. And for any educators out there that are watching, please email and call school board members and the Board of Supervisors and tell them your story. Let them know what you are dealing with on a professional level and a personal level. No one knows how you feel until you tell them it's time to open your mouth and say something. Thank you.
Am I next, Christina?
Stephanie is, but you all can help with that. It's not an issue.
Good evening, school board. Dr. Jones, I'm Christina Lewis, and I reside in Hampton Oaks subdivision, Garrisonville District. And I am a member of the SEA Executive Committee, and I'm here tonight to present some data from our survey regarding the substitute teacher shortage and the loss of planning time for our teachers. The packet that I will be leaving you with tonight, in our survey, we asked our educators for suggestions for solving this problem. So, we are providing 200 and some suggestions from our staff. We hope that you will review them. I'm going to speak on two tonight that I do think will offer some immediate relief: daily substitutes. I just want to make sure you understand what that is first before proceeding with what our recommendation is. Daily substitutes were a new introduction last year. That's a substitute that is assigned to a building all year long, and they make a commitment of coming Monday through Friday. So, last year at the high school level, we were allotted 10. This year, we are allotted 2. We learned last year from that experience with our daily substitutes, so beneficial. So, our recommendation is, is that we look at allowing for more daily substitutes to be assigned to each school building again for the rest of this year. What that accomplishes is it increases our ability to coverage, our offer coverage. Here's a good example. If we have a teacher that needs to be out in the morning, and they have a half-day request that goes out in the call-out system, and we have another teacher that needs to be out in the afternoon, and they put in half-day, well, that call-out is separate call-outs, going to separate members at separate times, and those are not likely to be picked up. Half-day is very rarely get picked up. But if you have a daily sub, the person who handles your substitutes in your building can have that daily sub pick up that morning and that afternoon, and you're not having to rely on department coverage. So, daily subs are definitely something we hope you will look at. Another benefit of a daily sub, we think it improves the experience of our substitutes. It helps them get acclimated in one building, learn the school procedures, develop a rapport, become a member of that building, get to know our kids, is continuity of instruction. This is another benefit. An added bonus, and it's something that we experienced at our school last year, we had 10 daily subs at the end of that school year, we converted four of those to licensed teachers, four. Three additional ones went on to be long-term subs this year, and we had another one at the beginning of this year that returned to us, who is now a licensed teacher. So, we have the added bonus, we believe that it adds to your teacher applicant pool. The second recommendation we would like you to consider is how we compensate our teachers and our pairs when they're providing this extra coverage for our classes. Because the reality is tomorrow, next week, and for the very near future, you're going to need to continue to ask those teachers to give up their planning time and cover those classes. So, we would like... Thank you.
You can provide your comments, of course, to Ms. Torek.
My name is Stephanie Mahiga, and I reside in the Garrisonville District, and I'm part of Moms for Liberty Organization. I am hearing more and more from parents about an increase of gay transgender propaganda in middle schools lately. My child will be attending middle school next year, and I'm very concerned with the exposure that she will have with entering a Stafford public middle school. I've heard that some staff wear transgender flag pins, and their pronouns are clipped to their clothing. There are posters that teach about transgender, magnets and pride flags in teacher rooms. Even the library has Little Rainbow and transgender flags behind the checkout area for all kids to view. As I stated previously in emails to you all, I am not opposed to students or teachers who are trans, gay, lesbian, whatever their preference may be. However, this flaunting in our children's face during school hours is not okay. The schools have a responsibility to teach our children and educate in an appropriate manner that is relevant to their education. There is an obligation by the school system to make all students feel safe and comfortable while in their school environment. Schools should not in any way impose any sort of sexuality to children. Our children do not need to know their teacher's sexuality preference. This is dividing our kids as well as being a distraction to why they are there, which is to learn. A teacher telling their student to call them "mix" instead of "miss" is confusing as an adult. I can't imagine how a child is thinking when unsure what their teacher's gender really is and what to call them by. Teaching sexual preference has no place in our school buildings. Promoting it to our children is inappropriate. Thank you.
If anybody else would like to speak, go ahead and get up and stand off to the side so you can come down easily, so you don't have to climb over your neighbor. Thank you.
I'm Nicole Doolin. I'm a mom. I live in Acquahia District. I have a third grader at Hampton Oaks and a freshman at Brookpoint. Three months into the school year, my son has not arrived at school on time yet. I've been here once before to talk to you. It has not improved, and I'm so much more frustrated than I was last time I was here. We said the Pledge of Allegiance tonight when we came in here. That's the first time this year my son's done that. He's just missing that every day, every single day. His first block teacher is going through chemotherapy right now, and she recorded a video message for her students on her last day of chemo. My son did not see that, because on Friday, his bus has no driver. He missed it entirely. He missed first block entirely that day. It's not okay. It's not getting better. Some days, he's picked up second run. Some days, his bus, which picks him up a half hour late every day to begin with, goes and picks up a second run on top of his that's already a half hour late. That happened today. They picked up kids out in Wide Water that were second run. There were extra kids on his bus. And every day, I open up the bus app, and it says, "Your route is scheduled to run on time." It's supposed to be there at 8:33. We haven't seen a bus at 8:33 yet. It comes at 9:05 most days, and when I open the bus app at 10 of to see where his bus is, it says, "Your bus is scheduled to run on time." As far as teachers reducing demands to make up for learning, that'd be okay if we were talking about, like, he missed a day. This is three months. Like, we're not talking about somebody passing in the notes. He's missing half this class. And it's a first semester class. This class doesn't go past the end of this semester. You guys are talking about fixing this for, you know, like, maybe we'll have bus drivers next semester. This class ends before then. It's not going well. It's not going well.
Hello, I am Maureen Sigmund from the Garrisonville District. I wanted to thank you for the agenda item on changing the school calendar to include three more days off for faculty, students, and staff. The word on the street is that these days are meant as a much-needed wellness day for the faculty and staff. And as I said when I spoke last month, the impact the school year is having on the well-being of our building staff should be of utmost importance. I grew up in New Jersey where hurricanes were a fact of life. Roof damage was an expectation. After a storm, when your roof was leaking, you got up there and covered it with a tarp to prevent future loss, but we still needed to fix the roof. Our schools have been through one heck of a storm, and our roof is severely damaged. If these scheduled days off are the tarp we need to prevent future damage, I'm all for them, as long as we also remember to fix the roof. I suspect these dates were chosen because these are the days we expect a high level of sub requests so that teachers can take well-deserved longer weekends. We cannot manage sub coverage now on regular days, so it would make sense to have planned closures on high-impact days. As a parent, I would prefer to know that it's an infrastructure issue and not just an employee benefit issue, even though the outcome is the same. Intent matters, especially when the cost of the decision is lost instructional time that the division has made it clear is our top priority. I want to know what we're doing to manage the staffing shortage better. Can we move from synchronous teaching model to a synchronous learning model? The engagement aspect of synchronous teaching is frustrating at best for teachers and students. Of course, turn the cameras on so quarantined students may watch and learn, but they take the expectation of engagement away. Is it possible to put a hold on required meetings and professional development until our staffing is more stable, particularly on teacher workdays, so they can actually do their work? When we're short on drivers, transportation staff left their desk jobs and drove buses. That helped during a time of high need. Do we have division staff that can bring their Chromebooks to oversee classrooms? Can PTO members fill the roles? What about the banks of parents countywide that have been background-checked for other purposes? It's crucial to find a way to recover our teachers' lost planning and lunch. We may not be able to give our faculty and staff what they want or what they deserve, but we should, at the very least, give them what they need, and that's time to do their jobs. One hour of planning time plus lunch every day. The cost of not having this time is too high for our staff, for our students, and for our community. Thank you.
Can you please sign in? Yep. My right, your left.
All right. My name is Juliette Schweiter. I am coming to you about homecoming. So, canceled, that's the word students and parents of Stafford County continue to hear. Prom 2020, homecoming 2020, prom 2020, sorry, homecoming 2021, all canceled. It's the numbers. Okay, well, Spotsy managed to do it. They were able to have a homecoming dance outside on the football field. Only if Stafford had outdoor football fields, too. Oh, wait, we do. Anyway, so with no homecoming dances, ambitious moms came to their children's defenses. They said, "Hey, we're going to throw a party for you," and they were there for it. But a Stafford High School moms rented a volunteer fire station out for an awesome homecoming. I hear it was a great time. But then, there was a school board representative who felt like it was their job, even though it was a private, non-school event, did their best to kibosh it. She called the Board of Supervisors, tried to have the event canceled, called the fire station to have the event ended. It was a private, out-of-school event. My daughter's having a Halloween party this weekend. You're going to call about that, too? I mean, stay in your lane. We have all these issues going on in Stafford. We have a kid who hasn't been to school on time yet, all right? We've got transportation. We have huge learning losses. We have teacher burnout, okay? We need two elementary schools in five years if I listen to what that guy had to say, okay? We have choices as parents. I mean, for school board, you got a write-in candidate coming right down your throat. This is ridiculous, okay? We deserve better. We don't need school boards running our outside lives. Stay in your lane.
Speak to the board, please.
Okay? That's all I have to say. Stay in your lane. Thank you, Ms. Chase.
May I have an opportunity to reply to the person who spoke to me?
Wait a minute, ma'am. This is not an exchange.
So...
Say, every time I... Stop. ...have something, I can't reply? Now, you want to...
Ma'am, ma'am, please. You'll have an opportunity. All right. Who is coming down next? Is there anyone else to speak?
Good evening. My name is Diane Cleveneau. I am a teacher at North Stafford High School, and I live in the Falmouth District. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but a few of the things my colleagues have brought up, I would like to emphasize, especially when it comes to having building subs. I am a special education teacher. I have eligibility meetings. I have 504 meetings. I have... No, I do not have 504 meetings. I have IEP meetings. I have eligibility needs, and we have those during the day. We schedule those with parents. Whenever the schedule changes, when our schedules have changed this year, we often have to go... we often have to go back out and reach to, out to parents and reach out to the other teachers who might be coming to the meeting because, wait a minute, 10:30 isn't first block anymore. Or 10:30 isn't second block. Every time the schedule changes, it puts more work on us. Because we have to reschedule. And having building subs available to like, cover that block for a teacher, why I need the teacher to come to the meeting is a big help. So that would be a big benefit to our school. I just wanted to follow up on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for signing in. And thanks for signing in, to remember.
Hello, my name is Holly McKelvey and I am an emotional support teacher at HH Pole Middle School. I do not live in Stafford County because I, as a teacher, cannot afford to live here. I'm here tonight to support the teachers recommend, the SE's recommendation for those additional days and the asynchronous days. Because I will be honest with you. I am an emotional support teacher. I have no, I have one pair that I do not have hired that we've been trying since last summer. So I'm already down a pair. I have another pair who is right now having a mental health crisis and so she's not able to come to work. So I have no pairs supporting my emotional support, my emotional support kids out in their classrooms. Now, I am all about my pairs. That is all I focus on. I stay at my school. I'm there by 7:15 every morning and I don't usually leave my building until 6 o'clock at night. Because my students are my focus. And they have been my whole entire teaching career. So I also support the daily sub request. Because you offer all these trainings, these great opportunities for me to go get trainings. But then I feel guilty because I don't have a sub, even for me, let alone my pairs. And then I'm one of the hybrid plan people. So all we can bank so many sick days. Well, I'm at that sick day bank. I have 39 days. I can have 40 on my calendar. Which means I either have to use them or I don't get any next year. And that's not fair either. I do come to work because I worry so much about my students that I don't take the time I need for myself. I have arthritis in my knee that I need to go get looked at. But I choose to go to work because I know I don't have subs for me. And that's every low incidence program in yours county. That is not just me. It is every building. So please, think about this daily sub idea. And also this support of giving us these days off for mental health. Because I'll be honest, I love my kids. That's why I'm here. I love my job. But I want to be there for them. And how can I do that every day if I don't have the mental health issues taken care of either? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lincoln Wamsley. I'm a student at Brookpoint High School. My mom has already spoken about how I have never been to the school on time. I have been 25 minutes late every day with consistency. The latest I've ever been was an hour and a half late, or thereabout, missing my entire first class, which just happened to be the day that my teacher recorded the video and it was showed to the class. It was that Friday. And the earliest I've ever been was still 15 minutes late. Also, my bus has, it will go and it will pick up for other buses that can't get a sub or for whatever reason. And when we do that, all the students get onto the bus. They sit in whatever spots are open. And there's not contact tracing between the students on the bus. There's no records of where they sit on the bus, who they're near, who they're next to. So if one of those students from that school is infected or get, catches a case of COVID, there's no way to tell who they were near at what time on the bus. And I, I have to, I have to ride a different bus every Friday, which is sometime a sub bus and sometime another bus coming to pick us up, which already has its own students from the load that it did also on it that we have to pile in with them, which gives the same problem of the lack of contact tracing on the bus. That's all.
Madam Chair, with your permission, can I ask what bus number that is, please, real quick?
I am on bus 110. W A N.
Lincoln, if you can go ahead and still sign in, that would be helpful. All right, anybody else?
Hello, my name is Laura Brewer. I live in Garrisonville District. I'm a Stafford County school bus driver of 25 years. And I am the vice president of the Stafford Education Association. Recently, I've heard comments from the school board representatives such as, I didn't know, I didn't realize, I'm shocked, I had no idea. I need data. Why wasn't I told? So let me share with you that it is no, that there is no secret that Stafford County Public Schools, like other districts across the Commonwealth and the country for that matter, are experiencing staff shortages, to include substitutes. What may not be apparent is the stress our staff is experiencing. Shortage of staff does not negate shortage of duties and responsibilities, all of which must still be continued and met. With no outside resources and a shortage of substitutes, we must rely on each other and creativity to make sure these responsibilities are met. The shortage has not skipped any classification of educators, from teachers to educational support professionals, to include paraprofessionals, administrative assistants, school bus drivers, nutritionists, fleet maintenance, building engineers, and crossing guards. Did you know our paraprofessionals at any given moment are pulled to cover classes? And in many cases, become the substitute for that day? I'm not sure shows, I'm not sure what shows more disrespect, pulling pairs to cover a class until a sub can be found with no compensation or being pulled to be the substitute for a day without being compensated as a substitute would be. Our paraprofessionals are a vital part of their team and are not expendable extra bodies. Another group of professionals that need to be recognized and compensated for the work they do is our transportation department staff, to include special needs bus attendants. When the bus driver pay scale was adjusted to improve recruitment of new drivers and retention of current drivers, other positions in the department were told they had not been forgotten. You need to make sure that that does not happen. Our route coordinators have worked nights and weekends long before school started to get the buses routed. If you hear, if you want to hear something impressive, you should hear our dispatchers cover runs, combine runs, and reroute ones, runs to make sure students receive transportation to school. Ray Newton, who was our mainstream dispatcher, has the skill and precision of a three ring circus master. And lastly, but no less important, are our special needs bus drivers, bus attendants. They are trained professionals who must know the individual needs of each of their students. The driver and attendant are a team. Buses with students who have IEPs that require an attendant by law cannot roll without a trained attendant onboard. It is imperative that our educators receive support from you. The support they deserve both through compensation and calendar adjustments to allow time for self-care.
Thank you. Laura, don't forget to sign in. Didn't want you to get too far. All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody jumping up to run up here to speak. So if not, then I am going to go ahead and close public comment. And we will move on to our board committee reports. I believe Dr. Warner is gonna get us started.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have quite a few things to, to manage tonight. Ms. Randall and I have discussed the nine legislative positions for consideration in this year's delegate assembly. These I've summarized and I have attached to the agenda. They cover such things as additional funding for assessment of limited English proficient students, education technology funding, constitutional authority to local school boards, increasing student access for internships, student health and wellness, 21st century for communication for school boards. And they go on to find ways of better school construction funding and 3R funding. In discussing with Ms. Randall, one of the changes we recommend maybe is amending item seven, which is 21st century communication for school boards so that it offers more flexibility so that some of our example advisory committees could maybe meet 100% virtually. We found that with the pandemic last year, this really facilitated a lot more parental involvement and I think it would be a real bonus. The other item that I will discuss with the legislative assembly and is something Dr. Jones brought to my attention is that legislation changed about a decade ago that put a cap on the support for additional support services, additional support staff. This would translate to about $673 per student for Stafford County, per, per student, per year for Stafford County, these funds. And it would be nice if the, if the general assembly would eliminate that cap, especially at a time when we have hired additional support staff to meet the social emotional needs of our students. And those funds that we're using for much of this additional support will expire in 2024. So for, I would appreciate it if you would peruse these legislative recommendations. And we will be deciding on these at the next board meeting because the assembly is the 15th of November. To move on to, on October 14th, the Fab met. One of the things we've been working on is the uniform salary scale. We have a number of jobs that parallel positions in the private sector here and nationally. Many of these jobs are becoming more difficult to fill. Last year, we adjusted the scale to account for years of service and removed the compression in the scale. We funded that, that adjustment in a single year. But we have not addressed the underlying problem, which is that the scale is below where it needs to be. For example, food service workers, fleet services. We, we are unable to hire experienced mechanics at the current salary rates. So the Fab is currently working with Mr. Fulmer and other departments to try to make sure that we can make recommendations about our salary needs for the uniform salary scale. The other items discussed were the increased burden on our school nurses because of COVID and the contact tracing. We authorized the hire of five contact tracers and currently we have four of those positions filled. We had a lengthy discussion with Mr. Jeter, who is our fleet services manager. Currently, our transportation facilities are woefully inadequate. We need additional bays. We need additional parts storage. Often, our bus repairs are extended while they await parts because we lack the ability to store them. Additionally, our current facilities were constructed in the 1980s. The bays do not accommodate the longer buses we use today, which creates a safety issue. As I mentioned before, we are unable to hire experienced mechanics at the current rate. Mr. Jeter has proposed that in the next 10 years, in addition to our growing student capacity needs, we need additionally 15 heavy bus bays and six light duty bays. These should probably be added to our next CIP. Besides more bays, we need additional technicians. And to point out the efficiencies that are, are by proper management of our fleet services, in one month since Mr. Jeter came onboard, maintenance costs were reduced by $40,000. This is a joint school board county necessity. Many of our, our fleet services also manages the county's fleet services. And currently, we have 22 to 25 spaces that are tied up with vehicles that are from crashes or other impounds that are brought in by the sheriff's department. We need to find another source to locate that storage because we don't have room in our transportation services to maintain that. This will be, this was recommended to be brought to the three-on-three to discuss additional options that would be mutually beneficial. Finally, the governance committee met last night. I want to thank Zamari Holly and Ms. Copac. Zamari was from Stafford High School. Ms. Copac was from Colonial Forge High School. They met with the governance committee to explain their proposal for the student, new student media policy. The old policy hasn't been revised since 1999. It does not reflect the actual practice. I am truly impressed with the caliber of students that worked on this committee. And they worked with administrators. They worked with their advisors. They looked at existing law and they drafted amendments to this policy. This is attached. It's policy 2411 is attached for your consideration. The governance committee did agree to recommend approval of this policy. This will be brought at the November 9th meeting. We also reviewed the 3,000 level policies. These have been recommended to remain as written. These policies cover a number of different, a number of different issues from alternative instructional assignments in school, guest speakers, authorization of pilot and innovative programs, homework, summer school. But these can remain as issued. We are, the Fab committee, just to go back to Fab, we will be addressing a number of the issues that we have in staffing shortages. Clearly, as Ms. Randall brought, has requested be put on the Fab agenda, we will be talking about substitute teachers and ways that we can help improve the stress and the, and the work burden on our teachers. And ways that we can improve the salaries so that we can maintain a pool of qualified subs to help us when we need them. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mid-Eves?
Yeah, so the CGS governing committee tried to meet last Thursday, but they did not have a quorum. So they were not able to meet. So we will be meeting Friday. I don't know if it would be appropriate for me to make a comment at this time. I would just like to say, I had a parent reach out to me who has a brain tumor. And she was very concerned about a dance that was being held, given that her child would be at a school after that dance and it might have an effect. So I reached out to my counterpart on the board of supervisors to ask her about this. That is all I did, just as she frequently reaches out to me. She's the only person I spoke with about this. And now, all over Facebook and apparently in this boardroom, it has turned into something else. So I just wanted to clear that up. I imagine anybody on this board who was contacted by a constituent about a matter that was handled, being done on county property, might also reach out to their counterpart. Thank you.
So yes, the CGS didn't meet because they didn't have a quorum, but it was not because we weren't there. It was somebody else. I was alternate for Dr. Chase. And then for the gifted, Ms. Dr. Fallinger wanted me to mention that the Career and College Pathway website has opened. And so I encourage all families and students to look at some of the events that would occur that will help them choose a career or college pathway they're interested in. What she didn't give me here is the website. So I'm hoping, last year, we put it on the school's website. If you don't mind getting that from Dr. Fallinger and putting that up. Dr. Warner, I just wanted to, are you here?
No, but I've seen the career pathways.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. And then for Mr. Jeter, thank you about the, the buses, but I wanted to make a comment on that to say that our bus drivers, I saw it on the picture, was checking oil. Make sure that we have mechanics and technicians that are doing that and not our bus drivers. And some suggestions are, yeah, okay. But some suggestions about subs are in this document. So you all might want to look at that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our interim superintendent.
Madam Chairman, I'd like our governance committee to, to look into these reports because it's up, in my understanding, that this is only the standing committee reports. And I know occasionally, you, some members address the advisory committees. I know occasionally you, some members, address the advisory committees, and I think we need to be consistent in this. So if I could just put that request on for the Governance Committee to look into that. Thank you.
Sure. All right, let's have our interim superintendent.
It's been a long night, just one comment. I want to congratulate, and he didn't expect me to do this, but the Virginia Association of Science Teachers will recognize and award Mr. Michael Pratt in recognition. He will be recognized on November 18th. The award is called Recognition in Science Education Award for Science Supervision during the Fall 2021 Professional Development Institute. And so Mike, I've had an opportunity to get to know Mike fairly well, I think, in my tenure here, and just wanted to congratulate him on that recognition.
And Dr. Jones, I think you have one more about November 1st and our Band Together to Fight Hunger. So I think it might be a great time for us to just say that one more time because it's the last time before that event on Monday.
And if I remember correctly, we were not able to do that event last year, so November 1st.
It was virtual, but it's not the same.
Yeah, November 1st is a big date for our community. I'm really looking forward to having the opportunity to participate in for the first time, so remember, our Band Together to Fight Hunger event is on November 1st. Can't remember what's.
Mountain View.
Mountain View. Please join us.
All right, so be there. Sorry, just had to.
And bring non-perishable food.
Yep.
Or dollars.
Or money. All right, moving on to our consent agenda, there are five items. Is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments, deletions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This time, there are no action items. We have moved the proposed calendar changes. That is now 11.01. Let's see.
11.04.
11.04.
Okay, I think we did do that. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm looking at mine. So 11.01 is now the approval of the 2022-23 high school program. I'm sorry, I didn't refresh. It was on me.
Madam Chairman, can we dispense with the slideshow? I mean, I've read that, and I know it's going to be coming back, but this is really a late night. I mean, if we do our homework, we would have reviewed this, and this is no offense, but...
I would say that we could do that quick slideshow of the five slides and just hit the highlights, because it's only five slides.
Sure. I know, but these always tend to move on.
I think Mr. Powell, Mr. Powell will certainly move through those very quickly. Good evening, everybody. I'm here to introduce the Learning and Organizational Development staff that's on hand because we have in the table of changes, some changes that you may have questions about, and I'm going to introduce the gentleman who has led this project because we have a really good Program of Studies proposal for you for information. So Eric Powell, if you'll come up here. I also have Dinah Robinson, Victoria Basile. Of course, Mike Pratt is here, and Rebecca Towery is also here to answer any of your questions.
Good evening, members of the Board. Dr. Jones, I will be very brief and can do this if I can get it to come up. Am I? It's not moving the cursor. Oh, there it goes. Even though it's five slides, it's actually only three because the first one is the title slide and the last one's just a question slide. So three quick slides on the Program of Studies. You have in your packet a copy of the Program of Studies, as well as the table of updates and everything for you to be able to review, as well as a copy of the presentation. Process was similar to what we did last year, which is similar to what we've done over the past several years, which is to coordinate with principals and counseling directors and LOD works with lead teachers and various other departments throughout Central Office to get their input. The one thing that's different this year is that I'm here a month earlier than typically I would be coming in November, and then we go to action in December. This year, we're coming a month earlier because the school calendar is earlier, and we want to get the Program of Studies approved and out to the printers and back and posted online before winter break so we can get that scheduling process done. One major change I want to highlight is a new cybersecurity dual enrollment program that we're in the process of developing. This is through a CTE Innovation Grant and is being developed with a partnership with Germana and some local businesses. You can see it on page 15. I won't go into details, but basically, when students complete the program, they'll be in a position to go to one year at Germana and be able to get an associate's degree as part of that program. Three new classes that are added, information technology fundamentals and Java programming support both the cybersecurity fundamentals as well as our STAT program. And then we're also adding a third year of Spanish for fluent speakers. This will allow those students to be able to complete their three years of world language for their graduation requirements through those three courses. And that's all I have as far as major changes. You can see some other changes in the table, and of course, you can get me any questions or send them through Dr. Jones, and we'll be more than happy to answer all your questions.
I just have a really quick question. Maybe it'll be a really quick answer. Somebody just messaged me and said that they were looking at the slide, and the question came up is, why did you choose Java over Python?
I could not answer that. Is that something that Dinah, you can answer?
It was based on recommendations from my STAT instructors who are in this area. They felt that they could give the, let me look at my notes, the CertiPort IT Specialist certification, if they did the Java programming, that it lent itself to more collaborative working where the kids would work in teams to solve problems instead of independently. They outlined several reasons that they felt the Java programming, that it lent itself more to what companies were looking for.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so if any other questions, send those to Dr. Jones and to our clerk for response.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, in our order, is about the approval of proposed calendar changes for school year 21-22.
I just have one comment, and this is, I think, as Board members, you certainly recognize this, I certainly recognize it as staff. I'm saying this generally about public education. I don't know anyone that's working less. Everyone I know is working more, regardless of position, and some of that has everything to do with the additional mitigation strategy, et cetera, related to COVID, but it also has everything to do with the amount of shortages that we're facing. So I recognize, you know, balancing the instructional loss with taking care of our staff. You've heard plenty from folks tonight. I respect whatever decision the Board makes, but I do believe that if we don't take care of our staff, then we won't be able to take care of our students. I'll just leave it at that.
All right, any comments?
I have a question.
I have a comment.
Okay.
So there were some rumblings that this was supposed to come to us at the last board meeting for information. Our process is typically, something comes on for information, we talk about it. We put it on for information, we discuss it, we ask questions, our community can hear our discussion about it, and then the next meeting, it goes on for action. This, again, heard rumblings that this was coming to us at the last meeting, and it was at the 11th hour, not on the agenda. So I don't have a problem with giving our teachers the time. What I have a problem with is I feel like February 18th, not a problem with giving parents plenty of notice that we're going to give the day off. April 15th, plenty of notice, we're going to give them the day off. November 12th, we would have had two additional weeks to notify our parents if this was brought to us last week. So here we are again, doing another schedule change that everybody keeps, you know, making comments about, but now we're doing it to our parents again. So I'm going to support this only because of all the people that came out to speak tonight and all of the emails that I've received, but I'm under protest right now on the November 12th one, on behalf of my parents, because we're not giving them ample notice, we're not giving them an opportunity to opine on this. Thank you.
May I speak to that? I don't know anything about the rumblings. We talked about this last Wednesday in our instructional team meeting, so that's when we had the first conversation about the November 12th date. So I can't speak to rumblings, but I can speak to when we talked about it as an instructional thing, which was last Wednesday.
All right, any other comments? Ms. Randall.
So I'm going to support this as well, but here are some of the concerns that I have been reading between the lines and listening to the speakers, and I will echo Ms. Hollerback in that we have heard from parents that an extra day of childcare is expensive. So there's another, you know, concern for that as well. But the paperwork, the testing, the professional development, the data collection, the 504 coordinating paperwork, PLCs, I think that we need to make sure that we audit ourselves in making sure that everything we are increasingly asking our teachers is 100% necessary, or is there a break that we can give them in time that maybe November, with all of its broken days, is not the time, or December, I don't know. I don't know how this is all done. I don't know how it all works, but I'm just saying, I really feel that we increasingly need to give a special audit to those kinds of things that we are asking of our teachers. I do want our staff to know that, you know, I know that we are critical areas of shortages in subs. I know that we have approved as a board, providing extra counselors, extra social workers, extra paras, over 100 of them, we just approved a couple months ago, you know, and then it's, of course, I know Patrick is working double time in trying to hire and fix as many ways as possible for our educators. I know that, and the teachers that I've spoken with, and I really, really appreciate the time that I'm giving, that I'm given by teachers, but, you know, we have kids that left halfway through kindergarten and showed up in second grade. We have kids that left out of fifth grade and showed up in the middle of middle school. We have kids that are left in 10th grade in high school and are now seniors trying to figure out college when they came back from COVID, and I've got one of them. But I just feel like we have a frustration of kids, it's not even the learning loss, it's some of the behavior loss, where the whole understanding of how to do school as a student, or how to be a parent even of a kid back in school, and how to teach a kid that just came back to school. Like, there's just so many different elements. We, back to normal isn't normal, it's all new, and, you know, and I hear you. I hear you, and I don't mind being the listening person, none of us up here. I mean, we, when we get these things, it bothers us. It bothers us that kids aren't getting to school on time. It bothers, there isn't one of the seven of us that are not bothered by everything that we hear. And if, you know, anything that can come to us and say, this would help, we try to support it. We, you know, we have to balance things. We don't hear just one side. We hear a different side from other people, too. So I just want it exceptionally looked at as ways that we can ask less of our teachers, our PTAs and PTOs. It was such a pleasure meeting them the other day. They have such bleeding hearts for how to help in their schools, and they're trying their hardest to get things rolling in their schools. You know, COVID is still an obstacle. You know, talking behind one of these up here for short hours of a day that we're up here, and you do long hours of a day with this thing over your face, it's exhausting. So I, like I said, I know that there are things that we have done. I know there's more that we can do. We're happy to try to help where we can, and, you know, also, PSAT was on an X-day. November 12th will also supposedly be an X-day, and I have been asked, can we do a better balance of Xs and Ys? Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Dr. Warner?
First of all, I appreciate what our teachers and our staff have said. We do see this stress we're under. You know, I was speaking to a principal at a middle school, and he said that one of the things he's seeing, because many of our students miss those transitions, that he's seeing elementary school behaviors in middle school, and he thinks that some of the problems high schools are having is that they're seeing middle school behaviors in their high school students, and that because these kids, you know, were in seventh grade and missed eighth, and suddenly they're freshmen, or they were in eighth grade and suddenly they're in 10th grade, they haven't figured out the system. And it's clearly, as the bus driver pointed out, that she's getting damage to her bus. These are things that we shouldn't be seeing. These are behaviors that our kids should be know, should know, that this is unacceptable, but for some reason, we're seeing them. I think that we have to be more intentional going forward. I think we all had optimisms that this year would be normal, and it is as far from normal as you could get. But we are trying to address the staffing problems. We are trying to address the salary issues. We are trying to address these things. Dr. Chase and Ms. Randall, we bring these things to Fab, we discuss them, we're trying to look for solutions, and we appreciate it when you send us your ideas, because you are on the front line, and you can give us the information that helps us move forward and make some of these decisions. Thank you.
Anyone else? Comments? Oh, sorry. Ms. Healy.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I know this isn't going to be popular, but I will not be supporting this, not because I don't think we need to do something for our teachers, as well as some of the other staff, but I don't think that making three, four-day weekends is going to solve this problem. I think this problem goes well beyond having a three-day weekend. This is something we need to be looking at, these subs, someone talked about daily subs. You know, why would we cut from 10 to 2? That's the first time I ever heard anything about that. I mean, we have a lot of work to do to support our staff, but with respect to this November day off, we've already got five days off. We have five days off school in November, so we're going to add another one. When we're all crying about how far behind the students are, about the instructional losses, that doesn't, that doesn't solve the problem for me. I mean, it's a day off. We all have issues. I don't know any profession where someone has not been stressed by COVID, anything anybody does. But it's our job to be able to address these issues. So my question is, what have we done, and what are we going to do to solve the problem? Like I said, three, four-day weekends does not do it for me, and particularly starting here in November, when we've got five days off. So I would like to ask the Superintendent to report back to us about how we're dealing with these issues. I mean, certainly, a teacher should not, not take a day off of their personal leave because they can't get a substitute. Not tonight, but I would like a report on that. You know, what have we done and what will we do to solve those problems, regardless of what happens on this vote? I think the kids need to be in school.
All right, any other comments? Dr. Chase?
Yes, I just had a couple questions. So how many snow days do we have built in the schedule? After, if this happens, how many, just?
And also, the additional time we've already built in for continuing the schedule change through the first semester?
If we continue with the schedule that you proposed tonight through December 17th, with the hours that we have reduced, if it would, because I don't know what you'll do the second semester, but if it would continue through the rest of the semester, we'd have approximately, with this proposal, we would have nine snow days.
Okay, and so if it goes all the way till June, how, you know, because we had, we did hear from somebody saying, you know, you should keep the schedule and blah, blah,
went back to the second semester, like you said, went back to the 360, you'd have those, and you improved the three days, you'd have nine snow days. Now, with snow days, we need to understand that the state also approved 10 asynchronous days that can be used for instruction. So we've used one when we had the floods coming through and things.
Okay.
So we have nine of those days left also that we.
Now, so if we use two of those before, is this calendar doing anything about asynchronous days here?
No.
Okay, so that's not part of this. Okay.
Asynchronous is counted as an instructional day, so that would not take away from your banked snow days based on your hours.
Gotcha. I'm just trying to under, you know, and, and that helps, because I was going to also ask, what if we had to pivot to 100% virtual, the state is willing to allow us to do 10?
Yes, 10 total days.
Of those. Okay. Another question I just had was, is my understanding that we're waiting to learn if the president's mandate on vaccines for employers over whatever, whether we're going to end up finding our schools required to mandate vaccination? So if, if that were to happen, would we be able to, as somebody who came up and talked about, would we be able to provide vaccinations on, on one of these days? And you may not, neither one of you may know the answer. It's just, just a question.
It depends on availability.
Depends on availability. All right. Yep, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Ms. Young, any comment? I'm not putting her in a spot. Just didn't know if you did.
All the questions that I had were already asked. One of those was going to be the snow days, and then, I don't know, you talked about the 990, is it hours?
Yeah.
Okay. So where are we with that? Like, right now, we, we're far from it, correct?
Again, depending on which scenario we would play out, we, if we stayed on the current schedule for the remainder of the school year, we would have over 990 hours minimal requirement.
Okay. And the only other thing I have, Ms. Randall already asked the question about, it's not on the calendar, it's something that we need to take care of, this 4x4 and the XY. How are we planning on taking care of that? Or do you have a plan? And you don't have to answer that right now, but this, you know, we all got the email, and so.
XY is an alternating day in their year-long course, so it.
I know that.
You know, it's early right now. We, yes, as you said, it'd be two X days.
The teacher, the teacher is teaching both.
Yeah, so teacher could teach an X day, they could teach a Y day.
This teacher is teaching both a 4x4 and an XY schedule, and she's got to create three lesson plans to do this.
She, three times the work of just teaching one or the other schedule.
Right, that would be considered a prep.
They're not being compensated for that?
No, because they're based on preps. A teacher could teach first and second block. They may be teaching a 4x4, so that means they'd have one class for the semester during first block and second block. And now, third block, they could have an XY class, which means they would teach every other day all year long, which may be a different prep. It may be the same course, but at a different pace.
Let me, let me, hold on one second. Let me just read something without exposing who this person is, so you will see what we're looking at right here, right? So I need to get things set up three times, prepare three sets of welcome slides, assign three different due dates, and create three different grade books entries. But in addition to that, there's no penalty to the students if they're late, and I understand that we're giving some leeway here, but then the teachers have to go back into these individual assignments to figure out and record these grades, and put it on view and all that stuff. So it's additional work that leads into the night. So we just need to look at all of this, and to make sure that we're taking care of the teacher. And I know we don't have subs. I know we don't have enough teachers and all that, but we just need to look, and this is what I was saying earlier, we have to look at root causes and not just filling in, you know, we could give them days off, but there's more than meets the eye right here, I see.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I'm going to make a couple comments here. I want to say to those who came and spoke tonight, thank you for giving a glimpse into your life. I have been also talking with those, and I wish I had the easy answer. I really do, from the bottom of my heart. I do think, again, we do have to work at the root causes. I will tell you, I don't read during the meeting, so I haven't had a chance to go through the SCA, but I will do it. I will mark it up in all my colors, which is what I usually do. But I really would like to ask our, our staff and Dr. Jones, if we can arrange some kind of an elementary, a middle, and a high school listening session to put even more flesh on these, because we need, I think that that would be helpful. Like I said, I will read through these if it doesn't seem, you know, but I do want to make sure that you all are heard. And I do think that listening to each other in, but I do think it should be elementary, middle, and high, because I do think there are potentially different challenges within each of those. Because the teacher workload audit, as I would call it, I think needs to be done, but I do think it's, it's somewhat, you all have similar challenges, but some different ones. And the way to be able to bring those forward is to make sure that you all are heard. I would really like to ask Dr. Jones or the chiefs to, to come up with some way to do that before the end of this calendar year. I mean, I know with November, it's crazy, but we need to get that done, because we need to be hearing our staff on, on those levels. So I would ask for that to be arranged in the, before the end of, before everybody goes on their real break. I will say, I am supportive. I do have one concern about the second semester, though, so I'm just going to bring it up. I'm not going to tinker with it. I'm not going to overrule the experts, but I do see that the only planning day we have is January 3rd, and then the next one is May 11th. It's very hard for me on the 18th not to, I'm just talking through it, to not have that planning day, because I am hearing so many people say, "I need that time in the building. I need planning time. I need to work with my colleagues." And from January 3rd until March 11th, I think that's an awful long time without some kind of planning or work time in your buildings. So again, I, too, will be supporting this, but I will highlight that for me. I think that's a huge hole, that the 18th being a professional day would have made me happier, because I do think I'm hearing you all saying that that is something that's needed, and I'm not sure we're meeting that particular need with the calendar, but I hope going forward for next year's calendar that we do. One other thing I would note about November, having been the daughter of a teacher, it is very hard to come back and teach with a midweek day off, a Tuesday or a Thursday. A lot of people take that next Friday. I know that our bus call-out rate on that Friday is bad. I am not saying that I want to encourage people to take that day, but I am also a realist in some sense, that those of you who would come into the building on the 12th would be probably tasked with triple the work, in my opinion. So I will be supportive of this. Again, I can't say that my reservation about the 18th and not having that planning day does not remain. Sure?
Dr. Jones did tell us the other day, too, that he has arranged a roundtable with teachers and parents coming up in November, so that'll be helpful for him to collect that information for us as well.
Well, and we'd like to, I think, be involved in those to the extent possible. I just think that that's helpful for all of us. Yes, Ms. Young?
One more thing. I think that I mentioned this before, when we put together the Transportation Committee. I think we should, I thought about it, to have one for every area in the school system, I think is beneficial, not just transportation, that was important at that time, but we should have it for the rest of the staff, administration, paras, just a group of individuals that can bring up these issues often before it gets to this point where, you know, it's a, it's a breaking point right now, and I think we just need to have those conversations earlier. I don't necessarily think it needs a public listening tour. It's just coming to the table, like Dr. Jones planned on doing, and talking to the teachers, and some parents, and the SCA, and just have that conversation, what's best for the school system, what's best for the parents.
All right. Oh, no.
Sorry.
Okay, we're getting giddy now. All right. So is there a motion on the table, or no?
I move to approve Dr. Jones' recommendations.
Oh, yeah. Yep, we'll have to do that first, sorry.
I'll move Dr. Jones' recommendation to action, please.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of moving this agenda item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there a follow-on motion?
Yes, I move to approve Dr. Jones' recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Hall, can you pull the board? Sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
Aye.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Ms. Hollerback?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Dr. Warner?
Yes.
And Ms. Young.
Aye.
Madam Chair, motion passes.
All right. Moving on to our adoption of the resolution regarding.
Madam Chairman, may I just ask a question? Does that include these asynchronous days for Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week that have been requested?
No.
No, I didn't know if that was something that was within the superintendent's purview. So we are not, we are going to school on Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week.
Yes, just back to 12th, February 18th and April 15th.
I think we've all read the Wide Water State Park Science and Environmental Center. Mr. Horning was here earlier. We will see this again next time.
Can I just ask a question? Is there any cost associated to this?
All right. Then the next is about the equipment and services from Tyler Technologies to pilot an onboard bus management system. There may be questions here.
I do have a question about this. My wonder is, with this technology, I want to, is this technology and the results of it going to be put through our ad hoc committee, or are we going to see or learn about, did this technology do what you wanted it to do before a purchase order comes for, like, the next batch? How will we know that this is doing exactly what we want it to do?
The answer to all those questions is yes.
Perfect!
Yes. That's the point of the, of the pilot, really, is to, is to learn how it works, get our bus drivers trained on it, get their input, get the bus route planners their input before we move on. It really, it's, it's the technology, we're buying the technology, but it's really about improving the experience of the drivers. And that's what it's about. And if, if it works, then, you know, we'll bring it back.
Because I would love to hear the feedback, especially for more seasoned drivers where they're like, "Oh, my God, more technology on our bus," or maybe it's like, "Oh, my gosh, this technology is everything." But I would like to hear that feedback before it comes to us with just another order for them.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. We're going to go through the ad hoc committee on transportation with the results and all that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Does anybody else have a question? I know I do. This talks about the RFP for this. If this is going to be covering, what is it, 10% of our buses, it's the $125,000, $125,000 amount, and that's for 15%. So we're talking really a $1.2 million potential ask for the full, or no?
No, ma'am. It's about 15% of the buses, or about 40 buses or so. And we're, we're front loaded, some of it is front loaded as far as getting the project off the ground, but to expand it to all the buses, it's, it's not times 10. It's, it's more in the 500 range-ish.
Okay, so we're talking about then, because it's not a budgeted expense, are we okay, Mr. Foam? I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to be sure. I don't want to.
Yeah, so for this pilot, yes, with, we're going to use the targeted savings from our, you know, salary lines and buses, and so the compensation lines. When we go forward with the full purchase, assuming that after the pilot, we want to move forward, that's when we'll identify additional funding, potentially carryover funding. It's a one-time purchase, so it would be a great, a great item that we could request from the Board of Supervisors that I don't think they would have a problem supporting.
With transportation, okay. I just wanted to, just want to, making sure we're keeping. I do see that there is some urgency potentially to this item. I don't know if the board would be inclined to move this to action. Yes, Ms. Healy?
Since these funds aren't budgeted, if, what is the point of moving this, you know, forward if we're not going to expand it with, within this year? I mean, in terms of the urgency of doing it tonight versus waiting till we follow our policy and have it on for the next meeting?
Great question. And Mr. Cook, and he probably knows the timeline a little bit better than that, better than I do, but I'm going to speak at a higher level. So it takes a while to get these units, and we want to be able to pilot them this school year so that we can, if we want to move forward, we can order the next set and have them installed over the summer, so that we have all of our buses fully ready to go next school year. And if, you know, just, just like our actual buses and everything else that we're trying to order right now, there is a backlog. And so we're looking at two or three months.
To install, we're looking at three to four months to get the equipment and get the, everything installed, and then we'll, and trained up everybody. So we're looking at a pretty, pretty big delay to get this off the ground.
Plus with the weather. I don't know what the weather is going to be like.
Well, I don't think the weather is going to affect it too much.
Middle winter.
Yeah.
Supply chain, we're having problems with supply chain.
Yeah, the supply chain is definitely the issue.
I, I have no problem moving this item to action. Item 11.04, motion to move it to action.
Second.
Sorry, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, for the limited purpose of moving this agenda item to action, I mean, to the action items. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. Ms. Hall?
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
Aye.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Ms. Hollerback? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Dr. Warner?
Yes.
And Ms. Young?
Aye.
Madam Chair, motion passes.
All right. Is there a follow-on motion?
Motion to approve item, I guess it will be 11.2?
12.02.
12.02.
12.2.
To authorize the purchase of these, this pilot equipment for the transportation.
Second.
All right. It's been seconded. All those in favor, please. Sure. Yes, I'm sorry. Yep, go ahead.
I'm, I don't know that I would be opposed to this. It sounds good, but I really don't have that much information. Our next meeting is two weeks from tonight, and that's why I'm not going to support this, because the reason we have our policy that says it comes for information and then comes for action is so that we do have a chance to have more study and get more information. I understand there's a backlog, but if we're not talking about implementing this until the next school year, that I don't think that that two weeks is going to make, you know, a difference in getting this in and getting a pilot. So that's why I'm opposing it, not because I would necessarily not support it, but I would like to get some more information, because this is just a partial expense at this point. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and my concern is, I've just heard lots of people talk to me about how we don't have any subs, and so if we're using the salary line to pay for this, then we have less money for subs.
All right. All right. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any of those, any opposed?
No.
Ms. Hall?
Dr. Chase?
No.
Ms. Hazard?
Aye.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Ms. Hollerback? Is, sorry, Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Dr. Warner?
Aye.
And Ms. Young?
Aye.
Madam Chair, motion passes.
All right. Thank you all. Our upcoming.
Madam Chairman, I just want to make another request. I made an earlier request for the Governance Committee. I would like the Governance Committee to have a discussion about how we routinely do.
about how we routinely do not follow our policy and move so many items up from information to action without, in, in my view, always having a, a really valid reason. Um, if, if you were going to do that, then we ought to change the policy. But this, this to me is an example of that. So if, if the Governance Committee, you know, could look at that and see, should there be some standard when we're going to deviate from our policy? I think it would be helpful for this board to have a discussion at some point as well.
All right. Um, our next regular board meeting is November 9th. Additionally, the school board will meet within the next 15 days in closed session solely for the purpose of conducting interviews with superintendent candidates. The exact dates, times and locations of these interviews will remain undisclosed in accordance with Section 2.2, 3712B of the Code of Virginia in order to protect the privacy of the candidates who may not have revealed their employment search to their current employer. At this time, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.